All commissioners are present. And with that, we'll stand and Commissioner Banks will lead us in the application.
Once again, Father, we thank you tonight for all your love and kindness and protectiveness. We continuously pray for this commission and our community and the one that in our community they continuously bless us and lead us and guide us in the way that we should go. We ask all even the blessings and then yours in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. It's nice to look out in the audience and see all these faces. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting off with, we have the approval of the minutes. Commissioners, you have the minutes in front of you. A motion for approval. You have both the minutes from the September 23rd special meeting that we had for the budget workshop and also for the September 30th, I'm sorry, not workshop, but the special mission meeting that we had, and then for the September 30th workshop.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes that have been made.
Commissioned to be those.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And those changes were on for the September 23rd. Did you also do one for the September 30th there and there as well, correct? Okay, so it's for five. Okay, yes, yeah. Okay. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Motion varies, minutes are approved. And with that, we're going to move on to a very special presentation we have here tonight. Ask David, you'll come up.
Where would you like? It's going to be in public.
David Frank hit a milestone, actually hit a milestone last year. And we're recognizing it this year because this year he's gone over that milestone of 41 years. He has served this city and all the residents in it. You don't see that very often anymore. You are the most dedicated, hardworking, Keith, don't listen. The most dedicated, hardworking employee that we are blessed to have with us.
Thanks, God, I appreciate it.
You truly are. When the doors open, David is there and David is usually there when the doors close at night. And David, on behalf of myself, this commission, Mr. Rudd, yes, and the citizens of Crescent City, we thank you, thank you on the bottom of my heart for your service that you've given to this city, the residents in it. And those people that are not in the city, a lot of people don't realize that our gas company goes all the way to the East Blackham. And so he services those residents as well. And so on behalf of everyone, we just thank you. And with that, we have a plaque. Commissioners, I want to think we all should have a picture of the day.
Mayor, if you come around, we'll get everybody in the background.
Well, you've been here just as long.
Commissioners, if you can stand up, David, if you slip over that way.
Charles, don't you want to, I would like for you, well, maybe you need to get into. Yeah, we'll move over here, block right there and say that all the commissioners can be in it.
Mr. Banks, can you? All right, everybody, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
But would you like to say anything?
Sure. I mean, our town definitely has changed a lot in the last 41 years, as some of y'all know that have lived here that long or longer. And of course, I've changed too, got a little bigger here, but you know, a lot of these commission, commissioners have been here just about as long. You know, they've lived here, they know what's happened to our town.
These two, these two.
But, you know, we've got a great council, a great mayor, we've got a great new city manager and Bobby here, Mr. Pickens. They're going to do a great job for the city through the years. I'm not going to be here another 41, but I'll try and hold out at least another five.
He'll be here, he'll be here.
But thank you.
Thank you. We had a little luncheon for him yesterday, so all the employees were able to come and celebrate.
It was very good, I was eating on it tonight.
You're still eating on it tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, now I'm going to try to speak, speak up. Donna, if you would come forward. Donna in the audience?
She just walked in.
Come on up, Donna. This is a certificate of appreciation that we're going to present to Donna Middleton for the dedication to helping her neighbors in need. And I don't know if, and I know this is an emotional time for Donna, and we've put this off, and so tonight we, she has the courage to stand before everybody, but a couple of months ago, we lost a very dear resident here in Crescent City and a business owner and a very, very dear friend of Donna's. And when oftentimes you're in a crisis situation, we freeze. And Donna did not. Donna went into gear knowing that was her friend that was suffering. She went into gear regardless and she did everything she could to try to save her life. And in fact, she probably prolonged her life. And so Donna, with that, we thank you for your courage. We thank you for the support that you give this city constantly and for just being an outstanding citizen. And we appreciate you. And I know that Choice is looking down and she is smiling and she's got her arms wrapped around you all the time and we thank you for everything you did for her. With that. And with that meeting, so thank y'all for coming. Okay, with that, we're going to move on. Mr. Rudd, you want to start us off with a clarion?
That's right, ma'am. Last commission meeting, you asked us to provide you with an update of our contract for Clarion, so the gentlemen are here and they're going to provide you with an update.
Well, thank you and good seeing everybody again. Again, my name is Andrew Lappman, President of Clearing, providing fractional CFO Services for local governance throughout the state of Florida, presented to you all several months ago through the midst of a quite a transition. So what I want to talk about to you all this evening is just kind of where we were and where we're at now and where we want to be in the future. So to talk about some of the achievements we've made within the last few months, things that are on our hot plate right now and then kind of where we want to be in that stabilization phase at the end of the transition cycle. So this just provides us kind of a general overview, kind of implementation phase, process redesign, and the efficiency stage and then the stabilization. We've got kind of set well-defined business processes, we've got a solid team in place, knows all the day-to-day tasks, knows how to run your act, knows how to execute on the budget, all those things. And that's the stability that we're looking for going forward. So just in the implementation phase, from the advent of our relationship, the big things were software and people. So we did have a retired finance director, Ben Teacox, we've made huge effort to find a replacement and build a team internally here within the city. We've done that successfully, so led by Robin, she's hired, she's now as acting finance director in the city and we're acting in a consultative capacity with her and helping her achieve success in her position and run the finance operation. As we kind of move forward for process redesign, efficiencies, yeah, we're working big enough process. And so some of those sentiments, audit related, finding business processes that we had that presented potential segregation of duties issues. Some of that was lack of people, so we've got that. We redesigned processes in terms of who's initiating payments and who's reviewing and who's approving, so taking those steps. The consultant we had that had non-site presence here for the last several months and assisting with a transition and hiring, hiring new team members and also rapidly helping wrap up the 2020 audit and then developing those processes and control areas that we'll use for the 2021 audit report. And that's kind of where we're at with, you know, improving processes and then getting through the audit. We worked towards that stabilization stage, getting through the audit, working through those remaining audit findings and trying to get clear as quickly as possible. And again, it's that stabilization, that we're efficient, we're effective, we're proactive. And this just kind of gives a little detail on exactly where the things that we have accomplished and things that are on agenda for completion. So number one, the finance department, hiring, training, getting, you know, assisting with the transition, new city manager, city attorney, getting through the budget cycle. So that was a lot of the effort that we put in, especially our individual, those boots on the ground, working with the city manager, doing the finance on getting the budget pulled together and assisting with all those compliance efforts that go with it. The 2020 financial savings, the audit was not complete by the time that we started, so we helped with the wrap-up of that, get that finalized, so we got that done, got that monkey off our back. And now, gee, we're already at year-end and the new fiscal year, so the 2021 audit is upon us. With that comes resolving audit finding, we've taken strides in the engineering processes, using now the team members we had for some of those separation duties issues and other things to try to clear through those items. Then going into some detail on the next slide on that. Getting utility billing, getting events implemented that we should have to get the police schedule for tomorrow on the bill live. Other things that now we, you know, that are trying to get done, that we still have some work to do, we mentioned updating, reviewing charter accounts, especially rates of fees and utility funds, the profitability, those are lack thereof, we need to get updated rates of fees on utility operations. Full cash treasury, we've got 15 bank accounts, we're making an effort to consolidate those to make the bank reconciliation process more efficient. Just number nine is just general reporting and having any meaningful reporting available to you all that can pull out of the system and have, like I said, really available, good, meaningful reporting to both internally the staff and to commission and public advance on a regular basis. Work towards more paperless environment, still on his do list, utilizing the system to its greatest extent, so not processing paper documents and running April round and get signed, electronic workload helps payment processes better. And then just for us, the ongoing support and assisting with all those efforts, dealing with compliance reporting, advisory setup. And then the next, the next slide is just on the audit results. I know it's obviously a focal point, you know, reconciliation of account balances, that's something with our direct involvement in the 2021 audit, that finding stems from, again, account balances that were stated, that were presented in the audit, that the auditor has to propose adjustments to correct those balances due to reconciliation activities that weren't performed from a previous audit. So we're confident with our team working together with Robin, that we'll have a clean trial balance and audit ready work papers to provide to the auditors that will resolve that finding. Segregation of duty we talked about, so we've already drafted revised internal control there to address, specifically address those items. Utility, filling cash receipts, we've got, we already have responses on that and how we're addressing that. The rates we talked about, that's, whether the rates is an issue with the legacy system, so looping into a new, a new system that should resolve that for 2022 and '24. Again, authorized check signers and EGTs, that's a part of that kind of necessarily segregation duty issue that we're getting resolved. And then these last two are more accounting type items and resolving delinquent due-to-do-from balances, working to get those corrected and that's what we can do as part of our year-end closing process, as well as with debt compliance and system, make sure we've got enough reserve money and debt service that we're complying with the applicable compliance requirements as stipulated debt troubles. So we'll help management, help management team keep an eye on that and make sure we're complying with that for the 2021 audit. So again, just to summarize, we've done some great things in the last few months. We've got a new team here, we're working towards that stabilization, we're getting there, still some, some mountains left to climb, but we're excited to continue working with Robin on getting to where we need to, to get her to a position where she hurts and can operate freely and independently and continue to operate the city's finances in the best and most efficiently possible. So that's our goal, we're here to help, help Robin to continue through the process. I'll address any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, if we have any questions? Are you ready? Do you want to speak in, yeah, speak into your mic, please?
Can we hear? Sorry. And I just want to apologize for not looking at you when you were speaking. I realized I left my whole commission notebook at home. So I just have my notes and I texted my husband, can you please find it? But I do have my notes, so, and thank you for everything you've done.
Dog ate it.
No, we had this big stack of reports and it's very heavy and I think I didn't notice. I've got no, okay. We have been a transition from the interim city manager to Mr. Rudd. And so we've had a lot of changes here and obviously helped with that. We're now six months into your contract and I was looking at the contract and I was looking at the original timeline proposal you gave us. So one of my main concerns is, and we discussed this at the beginning, you know, if you remember, we had to focus to just a one-month assessment and then we signed the contract. And initially, I think we had talked about a six-month contract. And our then-city attorney suggested that we go ahead and do it for a year and lock in the rate. And I know, one of my main concerns is we are paying Clarion. Originally starting out as our interim finance director, now we have a finance director. So we have, basically, we're paying Clarion a significant amount, it's about $5,000 a month, I think, is that correct? Right, and then with the travel. And then we have our permanent finance director, who I understand is being brought up to speed and we have filled, we have one core position and you recommended two and we have filled that. So my concern is, how, how long do you see a Clarion needed in full force? Because we're at the six-month point right now and that's a year contract. And I noticed the transition plan is 18 months.
Sure. And so I can certainly have city manager and finance director wing as well, but I think we're at a critical point right now where you mentioned Robin getting up to speed, so it's exactly what we, what we want to do and help her through that to help set her up for success. We've got some big ticket items ahead of us, mainly with closing the fiscal year, you know, she's walking into a new situation, you know, new industry, new city, you know, understanding all ins and outs of both, you know, the closing process and governmental accountants, she's going to need that, that support, that guidance. Are we going to be here forever? Actually not, that's, that's exactly what we wanted. Are we going to be here forever? Actually, no, that's, that's exactly what we want to do, get to a stable situation and then, and then pull out. So, you know, what is the timeframe line? I think that's a real thing. I think at least we're thinking through the audit, which, you know, I think is probably late winter, early spring, so maybe we're working, you know, through the, maybe every March timeframe, just kind of doing a reassessment. And certainly, you know, we're flexible as well as to, okay, we need to kind of pare this down a bit at a certain point. And that's something, you know, I'll want to work with management on the internal, it makes sense, because I don't want to, you know, waste the city's money and, 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 you know, our level of effort is, you know, really dependent on, you know, our joint working with Robin and team. And when they feel like, hey, we're at a pretty good spot, that, you know, we can use you on more of an absentee basis, we'll hire you and let's, let's restructure. I just don't think we're there yet. So I don't want to pull up now and set her up for failure. So I think, you know, we'll get to that point sooner than later, which is not quite there yet.
Okay, and just a couple of more easy questions. In the original plan that you gave us, you recommended merging utility billing under the finance department. Do you have any more thoughts on that or is, is that a to-be-determined?
Yeah, I haven't been pretty in discussions that, that maybe you have had with, with our consultant that was around. I think at first glance, we felt that was prudent to keep it under the, the control of finance. And from other communities that I come from, that's generally what I see. Where finance oversees that area. So I think that's still something that we need to evaluate and kind of apply a decision on. But that was a best practice based on, on benchmarking from other cities, other communities that we've worked with, as well as interviewing, you know, individuals, you know, here internally where it, it felt like that was a logical move, actually.
Sure. And then my last question for you, really, I looked at the contract, the one that was signed in April. And I believe it mentions periodic reports specifically to the commission. Obviously, we've had a lot of transition here, but really in six months, this, I think, is the first report that we've had. So I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but I think that, that provision to give periodic reports needs to be, you know, more frequent. Because this, this is a lot and, you know, it's expensive for us. And so I personally, I think we could use an update to the commission in kind of the format that did much more frequently.
Absolutely.
I would say, to me, I would say every month, because hopefully we're gathering some momentum here. And I, I personally would like to know every month how things are.
As we get into this phase-down phase especially, to make sure that we are on track. I think that's most important, that we know that we are on track to where we should be. So when that, we hit that deadline mark, you know, we are, because I think that's the intention that we had all along with this with this before.
Yeah, happy to do that.
So, but anyway, thank you for all your work and your reports are always very clear. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioners, I do want to ask you this, that when you're asking for every month, I don't know that we need to travel here every month. Do you want him to do it in writing? I mean, is that okay if he gives us a report? Howard, what's your preference? We need to give him some guidance and fairness to him. And keep in mind that every time he travels, it costs us money.
A report.
It all, it all boils down to money. It all boils down to money. And now John is no longer on the ground, correct?
Correct.
And I didn't quite understand why John was, why he's no longer here, I guess. He's completed the portion that he was going to do.
He's having major surgery in October, so he, he wanted to, you know, prepare for that and he had the surgery then recovery. So it just, it didn't make sense for him to continue.
Okay, I didn't know it was for medical reasons. I thought it was.
Did he accomplish everything? Did he accomplish everything that he had?
That he wanted to, yeah, yes, he did, yeah. Heavy in the hiring process and initial training, closing out the audit, you know, preparing our responses to findings and then updating internal control narratives to address those segregation duties issues and other things that were discussed by the auditor. So may definitely make some, some strides in those areas.
Okay, commissioners, do we want to do a motion as to how we want this, this presentation?
I'm happy to make one.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Sure. Well, just want to thank Clarion for their presentation. And I would move that we ask a Clarion for monthly written reports similar to what was presented today from now until the conclusion of the relationship.
We have a motion, we have a second. Commissioners, do you want to consider that possibly in three months, that we have an in-person? Is that something that you would like to add to your motion? Because in three months, we're going to be a lot further, we'll have had closeouts of our last fiscal year.
Well, I guess my thought is because you're asking me, will I accept that amendment?
No, I can't make that. I'm just asking.
I know, but I'm saying if someone makes that amendment, will I accept this? I guess my thought is that we can just request the monthly reports and maybe next month, we could make this determination.
As we get further down, we can determine if we need another in-person.
We're very flexible, so whatever you like, we'll accommodate.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, no. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, we'll move on to.
Yes, the, actually, the inspired, they had a schedule change. We're going to move that to next month and flight change out of the country. Fortunately, I have a presentation for you in November.
Yes.
Inspired, yes.
Commissioner DeVito, yes.
I noticed there are three things usually on our agenda that did not appear on the official agenda. They were the city manager's report, the city attorney's report and items from the commissioners. Are we still planning to do that?
We are.
Well, I know, and let's put it this way, we're so used to seeing it there, but I didn't even, well, I sort of wasn't there until this morning. Because I do have some questions to ask about Inspire Technology, even though they're not here. But if Mr. Rudd's going to have time, I'll get to him, and I could just do it back.
Do you want to do it now or do you want to wait until you're, until you have your?
We can do it during my report.
During the report, okay. Okay, with that, we've got Captain Esser.
Sheriff's report.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Do you have a copy of the report we have? I'll start off with some cases. I'm happy to say that it looks like we've had a lot of law enforcement activity and a lot of criminal activity, which I, I guess is a good thing. And the numbers and this, this, this lack of criminal activity, I think, is due in part for, we have all of our positions built now in Crescent City, so we're from very low. And again, like I told the mayor, we're looking at probably somewhere around the first of November to do an open house in the office here in Crescent City. There's the old middle school on Burger Street, I'm sorry, Prospect Street. So we're really excited about that. We're almost finished with that project. Been a little trying, as we've all heard in here, the, the closing of the fiscal year has caused a few issues. We're struggling there, but we've got a lot accomplished there. So hope to be in there sometime around the first of November, I should see. We'll start off with our first case here. And what I've done is I didn't go through every single call, just went through the ones that were of kind of significance to me. First one is at 551 Summit Street. Deputies checked out with a vehicle in the parking lot with two individuals that were sleeping. Those, those individuals were subsequently arrested for some drug-related charges and the, I know they've had a warrant for it as a rest. So they had histories of burglaries, thefts, things of that nature. So they were probably up in those good years. So good job on those guys for getting those, getting those individuals taken into court. I've got to check the, the location on this one. I'm not sure if this 406 Union Avenue is actually going to be on the city limits of current city. But I'm, I'll check it. I don't think it is. But we do have a person of interest in that case as well. Then we picked them in this one, had a individual who was working beforehand. There was some argument over some money and then all of a sudden fooled by this, and so he's obviously a person of interest, person of interest for us. The next one we have was a drug investigation. This is again, great job by the deputies that initiated this. They had a traffic stop for traffic violation, a probable cause search of the vehicle revealed some marijuana in the car, submitted an amount of 53 grams of marijuana and two semi-automatic firearms, semi-automatic firearms were taken off the street. And reason why I pointed this one out is I, I was shot with a stolen firearm. So it was just, when I see guns taken off the street, it's, it's very heartfelt. So good job. Next one here, we identified as a citizen's assist. Deputies were at the intersection of Vernon and Grand Rondo Street when they spotted an individual who was laying on the ground and was unresponsive. When they got there, he was not breathing, did not have a pulse and ended up, he was overbusing on drugs. The deputies administered Narcan to these individuals and a second deputy got there, administered another Narcan and ended up, he started breathing, started showing signs of life rescue, got there and took him to the hospital and he was alive and well today. So they will be receiving in the near future, they will receive a life-saving reward. Next is the, the traffic crash date that requested. We had four total traffic crashes. All but one of those were in parking lots, one was in the intersection of that parking lot. That one was the Family Dollar at North Summit Street, were minor, minor injuries in that one. Second was a Wendy's drive-through, was a rear end. The other was a Dominique's parking lot and Auto's on parking lot and both those were in proper back, someone back. The, the, the next page you'll see there reflects all general calls for service in Crescent City. That's going to be everything the guys checked out on. That's going to be your murder alarm, that's going to be that alarm. That's a total number there. If you also see, that number is elevated to last month. Last month, I believe it was in the 170. But if you also look at your traffic crash stops, because we have all our deputies here now, that's more than tripled, so, or nearly tripled. That, that kind of weighs why that number is so high now. And again, the, the four traffic crashes. That's all I have. Unless you guys have any questions for me? Kind of sums it up for Crescent City. I did want to talk about Trumpet Tree a little bit.
Okay, go ahead and do that. Let's go ahead and do that.
Our event, our special events coordinator is, has all that taken care of. It'll be a, a drive-through Trumpet Tree. And I've had some inquiries about some different people who want to attend that and hand out some, some items as well. So we'll have all that, we'll have all that taken care of. Any questions on Trumpet Tree?
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be right across the street, just across the intersection here, intersection here. Yes.
And I believe Mr. Rudd is working on setting up a tent for the city as well. So we'll be there and I'll fit in communication with Dennis.
Sounds like it's going to be a good time.
Sounds like it's going to be, sounds like it's going to be a good time, a good time. We appreciate that. So commissioners, do we have any questions for the captain?
You say you were shot with a gun that has been stolen?
Yes, ma'am. That's why, that's why I said it was very heartwarming, given the people who wanted to take guns off the street.
Baja Taco, is that, was that just one incident or has it been two?
I was, I used to save those for one month we're in, that, that was actually one, that was actually one event. We immediately made an arrest on that, identified that individual and made an arrest that day.
Okay. Okay, we have, yes, Commissioner DeVito?
One question about Trumpet Tree and two about law enforcement.
Okay.
So, Trumpet Tree, do you have room for any more purchase events?
Our special events coordinator handles most of that stuff. Unless he actually needs something from me, he reaches out to me. But as of right now, he is basically just told me to show up and bring a smile.
You know something, he's out of town this week, I believe, I've spoken to him, so I can put you in contact with, with him.
Who was that?
Deputy, that's Deputy Dennis Jones. He's our special events.
Yeah, I know. Because Business and Talent asked me how to participate. And so I didn't know what to tell them. But basically, it's Dennis Jones. And the other thing is, I want to talk to you maybe later. The nursing home, I talked to the activities director today. Usually they give out candy, but the new administrator does not think that's a good idea. And I guess this is something I should talk to Deputy Jones about. We were discussing the idea that maybe we can have another, like a parade, one year, we had a parade through the nursing home, whatever. In other words, even if the residents can't give out candy, maybe some of the children are trick-or-treaters would still come by and show off their costume. But I'll talk to, that must be a Deputy Jones issue.
We're planning on, the argument will end at seven o'clock and the plan is for them to be able to go, if that's what you're talking about. The children and participants will be able to go through the streets and be able to go door-to-door at that point.
Well, though, well, I'll, I'll talk to Deputy Jones and then, and two law enforcement questions for you. One, the Baja Taco issue. That, the resolution of that never appeared on the sheriff's Facebook page. It was on some other Facebook page. And I had asked, I think, at another meeting, that is such an example of how an alert that came out from the city would be very helpful. Baja Taco was very close to a lot of our houses and certainly people on my block would like to know if there was burglary. And I'm not suggesting that on the city's Facebook page, on the city's page, that we have pictures of criminals. But we could do an alert and put a link to where we could go find, get information.
Right. That alert went out a little bit too soon. That alert did not run, did not go through me, it should have. His picture would have never been put out there because he was immediately identified. So if I want to, if I were to put his face on social media, he would probably be gone. I'm surprised he wasn't.
Well, I'm saying, I don't want to speak to exactly what you put and I just want to make clear, I don't want on the city's website, pictures of criminals to scare everybody to death. Just the alerts that we send out, it would be really nice to know, just, you know, heads up, there's a law enforcement issue and you can go to this link to find out what it is. And so then people will know there was a break-in, you know, however many blocks in your house or what. Then the other thing I wanted to ask about is the status. I know that it's this month, but the status of the animals that have reported, been reported dead and then that's as part of the neighborhood. And we talked briefly, you said you've been in touch with the official law enforcement commission. Do we have any update on that?
No, we do not. And I'm also, we're working with the, the University of Florida to see if those animals were in fact, have any toxins. That's one of the main things we want to do. First, we want to find if these man, animals were in fact, had any toxins in them. Second, we want to find the source. And then third, we want to prove the intent. So it's an active investigation. I don't really want to go into any details about it right now. Everybody knows about it, so it makes it really tough for us because now everybody's, the, the accusations in the community right now is that someone has tried to poison the animals and such. So in my opinion, if that person had been sent out, probably already gotten that information as well, they'd probably stopped. So it's going to make it tough for us, but we'll get, we'll get to the end of it.
And, but I mean, my opinion is, when I heard about it, I thought it could be completely unintentional because there are toxic customs. So everybody's got a carpool around here. Could be something just lucked out.
In the captain, I think, will.
It could be anything. You know, even, you know, the accusation, we heard some different things from, from the regular poison you buy off your counter and, you know, rat eats the poison, he goes, I think they, the side effects of it, the body heats up and they go to try, try and find water, or something like that. And cat eats the, cat eats the rat, lizard eats the cat and
Sounds like a children's book.
But again, we're, we're taking the, the incident very seriously and we'll try to see what we can, we can come up with.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you know how many dead animals you had?
I don't want to say the exact number right now, because that changed after yesterday, so.
Commissioner Banks, you had a question? You good?
You good.
Commissioner Burton, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Again, we thank you.
Thank you.
And pleased with all your team and tell them how much we appreciate all they're doing. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to public comments at this time. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to public comments at this time. So this is at the time, except for our public hearing that we have at the very end for ordinance reading. Reading, I'm sorry, this is the time for any public comments that you might have. Please step to the podium, say your name, your address, and speak into the mic. You have three minutes. We have anybody that has any public comments? Okay, sure, come on up. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Thank you for being here.
I can speak highly. My name is Speaker Loria, and I'm a five ringed oh yeah. One of, the reason I was here is looking at your consideration of destroying or demolishing the Sonic Lodge. I just thought that we should really just maybe take a moment and consider it. I don't know. I drove by the building, it doesn't look great, but it is on part of our historic district. But, you know, if you look at that, back in nineteen ninety-six, we had the national, we had a historic district that is part of the National Register of Historic Places. And that is one of the one hundred and eighteen buildings that was determined to be historic. You know, there's no rules against us destroying it, but I would think that maybe having some look at it and see, you know, is it salvageable? It would be nice to not, just knock it down without any further thought. You know, we have some beautiful historic buildings in this town that are in great shape. But we also have a lot of other ones that could use some help. And now the city owns this one, maybe it could use some, some help and not just get rid of it. That's just what I asked that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We have anybody else that would like to speak? Now's your opportunity.
Simon Littleton, what's that name? I was, I might be talking to the thing that Miller Middle School, the gym. Is there a way we can get a workout for the community, like put a gym in there for everybody to use?
To use. Thank you. I know that we've been talking to the school board and they're looking at their facilities now to see how they can, you know, the community can use them and working on a program that they have for people to do that. The gym, I believe, still needs some work. It does need some work, but that's something that we definitely
To be able to reserve it on an online system, you can reserve, request a date and all the information will be available on their website online.
Thank you. That's a, that's a good idea. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner Steph.
You would introduce yourself and then
My name is Jim Stady. I'm a resident of Setsumo. Retired architect. Did my studies in preservation architecture. I moved to this area because I love Florida. And I wrote to a letter, I'm also a very strong member of the Prence, the Prence Star Society. And along with the sheriff, shortly will be occupying the historic school down there. Get to the topic. I did, in my role as an architect, I feel an obligation to, to do whatever I can for communities that are trying to grab onto something of me, like their history, to not give up on them, give up on it. And I was pleased to be able to get in there today. Long last, took a small bit, but I don't have any photos with you. And I was able to tour through the city manager Brett's abilities to get me there with one of his helpers. I toured the facility and there's, it's a mess. There's no question, it's a mess. Tree fell in there, I don't know, during a storm on the southeast corner, which you don't really see from the road. And that's the primary problem. It's also quite a bit of light coming through different portions of the roof. Sprinkled through the ridge, the ridge is gone for the sheet metal roofing on the south portion. But overall, it's structurally sound. I'm not saying it's structurally sound except for certain spots. The foundation is good. When it was moved in nineteen fifty-one, it was done right by one of the Mason, Masonry folks that was in there. It's part of a grand tradition in this community. And that tradition goes back to eighteen eighty-nine. It goes back to the Freemason Society. And in eighteen eighty-nine, it was one of the few ways that this brotherhood could get together. They started somewhere else. They started, I believe, in a barbershop, block west, maybe a block south. But you don't just keep buildings because they're beautiful. You keep them because it's meaningful to them and because somebody's heart is in it. It's not a showstopper, but it is a duty. And just to introduce quickly, like to introduce Howard Metchner, who is the former
I think he's gonna, I believe he's gonna get up and speak.
I'm just in favor of seeing what we can do with that building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, while you're up there, I do want to say for everybody that has driven by the middle school, that this is the gentleman that has been taking care of the grounds there. He's done a fabulous job of making the middle school He's out there, chainsawing all, working. Yes, sir, if you want to come to the podium, please. Thank you. It makes me think that my fire detectors
I know.
I keep thinking, I'm looking for my fire detector, I need a battery. Yes, sir, you would introduce yourself and give your address.
A very special living large one of thirty-two, I'm here about the demolition of that. We had created Freemasons, we would like to see that building re, re-relevated, uh, saved. We would like to see that until that, too. Why? It's called, it got a lot of history. A lot of the people, the older people that were affiliated with that lodge has gone on. And then it got, and then it was from, okay, from the sixteen hundreds, the Masons had that. And it was like, even, even older than that, Tom's Drug Store used to own it up there on San Diego, we moved it back there. And we would like, like to ask the commissioner, they are spad that building and see could we get it some kind of way. And I was talking to Jerry, and he said that the group that he is big, they, uh, they remodel buildings like that and restore them and make them with zillions of money. I wouldn't see anything that would become a park. The brothers and myself and I read all the other Masons would be, see that, spare. We asked the commissioner, they would put it in consideration. We're not actually going to tell them, but we actually would put it in consideration and spad that building. See could they do, get some kind of grant or something to restore that building? Because it is an old building. And I have documents that I would donate if they could turn it into a museum or something like that. I got some documents that would be pleasing to them to put in this building. And I would work with them, with this any real thing. We'll be available to work with them in any way we can to try to help this thing being carried out. Thank you very much for that. And if you will, let us keep, let us, I mean, let us keep it up there. Do whatever you will, but don't destroy. They said, you know, the demolition, they won't tear it down. Don't destroy. It's destroying history. That's what's wrong with Crescent City. Crescent City was being torn down, becoming corridors. That's why we don't have people coming in and building, bringing up things. Why? Because of that. I came to Crescent City in nineteen forty-seven. Now I've seen Crescent City die. It is keeping on dying. It ain't no building, it always dies because you take it out and then you make it. If that guy, a pocket full of change, not keep taking it down, ain't gonna have it. That's what Crescent City is about. I'm trying to say how the way you win, so I'm trying to say, especially you, Spanish building.
Thank you. Thank you.
These are our shoes and prayers that are buried in a box. Oh, wow, is in that building.
Thank you. And you're in a hopeful state for the discussion, when we have the discussion. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Anybody else? Seeing no one come to the podium, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to close out the public comment section of the meeting. And with that, we're also going to suspend the meeting at this time and open up our CRA. Mr. Rudd is going to do the presentation.
She'll be back.
She'll be back.
Good evening. A couple of months ago, as you recall, you asked me to bring you a presentation on the Miller property and what my recommendations are for that property, we have it up for sale. So I took a look, I did find the RFP that was issued, I put that in your packet. And it's actually a pretty good RFP, I read through, and pretty comprehensive. I like my talks about partnerships and so forth, and that's what I'll talk about tonight. So in the redevelopment plan, that site is identified really as a very important site. And then the proposed hotel use was actually a suggestion solicited as a use such as a hotel. And it goes into some detail, the boutique hotel with thirty-six rooms, free, maximum of three floors, verandas over the sidewalk. That's an important recommendation of the whole plan as we go back to those days where we allow that. The third floor would have either two apartments or a long-term suites. The south portion of the block would be for parking. And the first floor frontage would be retail restaurant, which I agree is very important that you're strolling along the street. That's better than just a hotel lobby. So this is an idea, and this is sort of a one, we require one developer to take the whole piece. And I think that's sort of part of the problem with it, it's a big bite for someone to do. And that may still happen, I'm not ruling that out. But, but my recommendation is we look at the parcel as, in addition to that one big opportunity, we make parcels available. So portions of it are available for someone to work with, for instance, the corner piece that's glued there, upper left corner. It's probably the most valuable part of that because the highway frontage. Someone may come in and be interested in that, and that would in fact act as catalyst possibly for the rest of the site. What would be important is that that site was built as if it were part of a complete development. So we would have requirements that, you know, they couldn't come in and build the site with their parking lot all the way around it, act like they're, it's just them as an out parcel. So it would be important that we, we work with someone to build it out, zero lot lines, no onsite parking. So they would, their parking provided the southern end of the block. And then they could meet their apartment requirements with that space we had at the end of working with us to build a parking in that area rather than on the site. And the same could be true of their stormwater requirements. Rather have to take up precious land on Central that's, you could have a one pond in the entire block. And so the incentives, how we incentivize this, there are a number of incentives. And this would be the key. My recommendation is we're not looking to sell this land. We're looking to partner with someone to build something that we want. So the biggest thing is the land price. If they'll build exactly what we want, we can make them yield, you know, that they won't. It's very common CRAs, even to give the land to a developer with extensive strength. You don't do what we want, we get the land back. But certainly incentivize price. Also, an incentive is the parking. They don't have to worry about providing parking on site. It provides at the southern end of the block. And then a tool available to us is future tax increment. So when we build the site, we can do a projection that, and we have the advantage, this site is zero because we've owned it for so long. We've owned it prior to the establishment CRA, so the base year value is zero. So everything that comes in, in new tax revenue, a hundred percent would go to the CRA. So it's very common to, you don't have cash on hand as an incentive. And say, look, for the first five years, we'll rebate you the new taxes you provide to us. And so that helps a project, often cash flow after the fact, provides a revenue stream. Those are very common agreements. And you project what that'll be and over five years, ten years, whatever it is, that you, you can promise all of it or a portion of the TIF back as an incentive for them when you don't have, you don't have cash on hand to give them a half a million dollars or whatever. So this is a picture from the redevelopment plan, but it's the kind of development we're looking at, I'm recommending for that site where, in fact, this is front of the beach. Each one of those properties is likely a different owner that they were built. So we would want a product that would look like it was all essentially one owner or built at the same time, even though we may build the corner out, then it might be a couple of years before someone built right next to it and so forth. So next steps, I agree, we need to have the property represented by a national firm, but the price, rather than a price, it's negotiable and we can subdivide. So we'd want to, someone, and I've had this where I've listed properties and they call me, how much is it? Say, well, let's talk about what you want to do. And so we would come to an agreement rather than a price. So it'd be a negotiated agreement in terms of what our incentives were, what to do, what we require them to do. And then also, our continuing services plan firm that we're going to talk about later tonight, we'll have them look at, as I showed you, I think I sent out to you, we do have architectural standards in place. I think we need to tweak those, update them. They only allow fifty-five percent of the site to be built out, for instance, which is not, not the acceptable on this property. We want to improve our landscape code and perhaps even adopt a downtown streetscape standard. So when someone develops, we can say, this is how the sidewalk out front needs to look as well. We can make them put in our standard for our streetscape. So those are the next things we can do moving forward. So we kind of put it back out there in the market. We can tweak the RFP that we have, it's a very good RFP, and sort of reissue it and then see, see what kind of interest. And I think as we improve our activities, that interest will rise to see that the city's reinvesting and things are going on, we'll make that property more attractive.
Okay, commissioners, do we have, before we start discussion, do we have a motion for acceptance? I assume they We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioners, do we have any comments? Any discussion? Commissioner Banks, you have anything?
I think it's a good idea to go that way.
You want to move your, I'm sorry, you can pull your mic down.
You should have got a retweet of these things. So how long is that going to take to retweet?
I can have it ready for you next month. Or reissue the RFP.
I think it's good and
Commissioner DeVito?
Yes, when I looked at the information that you gave us and when I've been looking at our downtown area, and this is something Patrick Kennedy actually talked about, in addition to updating our design standards, I think I mentioned this to you, I think we need more of a downtown parking plan in mind because every time someone puts in a curb cut, we lose parking. And I think since that RFP was done, we lost all the parking on Seventeenth when the medians were put in. So to me, a parking plan to keep downtown walkable and historic is also important. And, and as well, I noticed. You know. That corner was commercial for a long, long time, since before I was born. And I know Judy remembers all the shops that were there and Miller's grocery store and I know Commissioner Banks does too. And there are two really, I think two really gorgeous oak trees that existed there when it was a commercial property. And I noticed on your schematic. There were some nice little round things showing trees, but they didn't necessarily correspond with the big giant tree. So it would be my hope that whatever we did could. Like all the commercial activity that's gone on in the past that could somehow accommodate that. Urgent treatment.
I, I think that, excuse me, I think that tree is well within where it is, can be built all around. I don't think that tree needs to go.
Well, I'm just mentioning, I saw a little green, I saw a little green tree spot, but I wasn't sure I saw one that depicted.
I think it'll be out of the way if anything.
Work with it.
Sure. And so anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Banks? Commissioner West?
I'm good.
We good? Okay, we have a motion of acceptance. We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? I have. One, let's move on to the branding part selection.
Okay. We had, we put out an RFP for about a month ago for community branding marketing services. And we had a great response, we had five companies respond, provide you with their packets. Very talented, all of them, any of them more like an ad agency, can do continuing services. You saw some of them were very expensive. And the one I, I recommended, Arnett Moldero, was not the cheapest, was the second, I think, but. It's a company that has worked with nearly six hundred small downtown, small rural communities, small cities. And. Done branding for them, they have a tremendous track record. I recently saw them, I was at a Main Street conference they presented. And I ran back to the city I was serving and they got a new branding and it just, they did it years later, unfortunately, at that time. Since then, I've, I've done RFPs in three communities and they've responded and won the RFP each time. And I've just been thrilled with the results. So what I did was I, I got some more examples of their work to show you, explains a little better what a brand and branding platform can do and we'll go through that with you. So Arnett Moldero is, they're a planning and marketing firm, they got into marketing and because when they were doing master plans and so forth, they realized it was an important piece and they look of the community. These are some of the Florida brands that they put together over the years since they've done the portage. I was involved in the Palaca or the Maitland efforts. And so what a brand does, the objective is to reinforce positive attributes of the place. They spend, they come here for about three days just visiting and we set up meetings with as many different focus groups and, and the community put together. And they visit the community, they take hundreds of photos of the community which they leave with us. But it creates a unified message that is based in what the community wants, relevant to visitors and attracts business and tourism, as I'll show. And really creates a toolbox for us to move forward in all of our efforts and I'll show you examples of that. So grand elements include a market position, a typeface, you see this is Norman Beach example, a color palette, icon. Tagline, and then you'll see there's extensive brand extension as well as marketing collateral, which I'll show you examples. So one of the things they provided is really an internal tool, they'll give us a brand statement. And it's a narrative about the community, it's usually a beautiful, almost poetic piece, this is for Stanton, Virginia. And Stanton is a town that's spelled funny, you think it's Staunton when you look at it, the U is silent. And it's called the Queen City, Shenandoah was their, their old historic tagline, which they wanted to keep. But you can see, if you like a place where there's thriving city, sets its grid in the foothills of Blue Ridge. You like a city with the history of historic buildings, they have a real strong tie to the Shakespeare Festival every year. So they, they prepare a statement and as part of their reveal. We are Stanton, Virginia, as you like it, so their tag is takeoff from Shakespeare. So they decided to highlight the U, in fact, give it a crown of the Queen City or Shenandoah. And as you like it, is a ode to the Shakespeare Festival. And then you'll see how they use it, some of the examples, business as you like it, as for the Business Association, for the Downtown Development Association. These are some of the build out of the brand, the little icons they can use. The city had a historic seal they wanted to maintain, so they're able to incorporate it in. The city uses that top version for official documentation. And then there's a, a marketing version as well. So applying the brand. This is some of the build out in Maitland, they had a West Maitland, there's a mostly an office park, so they created a separate identity for that. We, we give them a list of existing events that may or may not want to adopt a new logo, we give them potential events, like First Night. Festive, none of those existed in Maitland, but we gave them a list and they created it, so in the event we, we do that. In this case, they did downtown Maitland, Come Together, because downtown is where they kept, everybody kept saying, we need a place to come together in Maitland. So Come Together became the tag, and so the city council liked it so much, they adopted it, the city, so the city doesn't use the downtown or Come Together, that's the city brand. And then downtown appears like this with the tag. And so part of the package is a recommendation for wayfinding for the community, and you see Maitland on top. Entry features, Travelers Rest in Tupelo, Mississippi. Those are ones that were actually constructed. This is, we get a web template for the downtown website, we can adopt it to the city website, we can brand it, so everything, you always know when they're looking at Crescent City. This is Newberry Arts, Newberry made an arts calendar, so there's branded the arts calendar, the little brand existing documents we have and they'll give us templates. These are templates for Palaca, for. Different guides that we potentially could do in the future, we've done a couple of them. They'll give us models for, this is some of the brand extension for swag. This is Beaufort, South Carolina, historic downtown Beaufort, you can't read it there, the, the tagline is. I can't, too small. But this is, these are sample ads, part of the deliverables packet or sample ads that we can use either for print, for social media, or even for, you know, at the register downtown, people are shopping, they come up and pay. We can promote ourselves and other attributes through this, this packet of materials. This is Hendersonville, South Caroli, North Carolina, very popular destination. You can see they've built the logo into their tree grates, their downtown furniture, the wayfinding everywhere. And Arnett Moldero did that logo for them. This is Laurel. And I wish you can read the smaller paragraph, but this is some of their economic development materials. They provide a business recruitment packet, they give us a folder template and materials inside so we can. When we create information to recruit someone, a developer, for instance, we'd have a nice packet that looks very professional. And matches our brand. This is more, Norman Beach had a number of sort of districts, so they provided. Each of the district that all ties together to the overarching brand. And again, some sample advertising that they can do. In their marketing efforts. Here's some more sample ads and brochure ads, Bealedale, Virginia. Smith Rivers, small towns, they've done some regional brands, you'll see in here. This is Graham County, North Carolina, a natural destination. This is Southwest Virginia, this was an area. For. Probably Tourist Development Council. This is the Clint River Valley. Downtown Dunn Development Corporations for Downtown Dunn, North Carolina. I love this one, Travelers Rest, South Carolina, it's a little crossroads, kind of in the middle of the road before you get to the mountains in South Carolina. And they found when they visited the community, a logo was called a TR. It's that heavy South Carolina tag, T.O.L. And so the logo, the T.R. is two, they did two campaigns, Get In Your Element and it starts with T.R. So the trek, trails, transported trip, travel starts with T.R. So T.R. had a lot of outfitters and so forth, you get your stuff in Travelers Rest and then you went to the mountains camping, so it was a very clever campaign. It starts with T.O.L. These are some of the other, both city logos and. Recreation departments and so forth. It just provides us a host of opportunities to. To market ourselves, this is some economic development brochures and materials. It's more Sagtown Bedford. So I just think, I love their work and, and I'm very excited about the possibility of them coming here to work with us. You saw the timeline would be, it really probably January before we had the deliverables, just based on their schedule and they have to schedule several visits here and, and to work with us. And so they'll do a preliminary reveal and then they'll actually go back to office and work out. And they stay with us for months after, we can say, you know, we forgot, you know, we want to have a dessert stroll, they'll create a logo for us, they'll keep giving us the materials we need. We need a new brochure for this or a marketing piece. And they continue to work with us, so they're, they're very experienced in this and my, my recommendation is to. My request is for authorization to enter an agreement with them for branding marketing services.
Commissioners, before we start discussion, do we have a motion of acceptance, it's recommended, Mr. Rudd's recommendation for Arnett?
I surrender.
Okay. Second. We have a motion, we have a second, have a discussion. Commissioner Burton, you have any? Questions, comments?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
We need to get going.
Got too excited there, did? It did, okay, Commissioner West?
Now, reading all of this, I currently admit it sounds like a good country to go. Because they like, they've done small cities. Several of them are wonderful, but they do the big cities mostly.
Commissioner Vida?
Yes. Well, that was very exciting, the, the least inspirational on there was our county seat, which seems to have a long way to go, but they've done, they've also made some good steps. So, you know, you can't say that it didn't help them. So, so I recall, our budget was thirty thousand dollars, right? That we said, and you're giving us the total here that they've. Proposed as twenty four thousand and some?
Yes.
Okay, so you mentioned. Like there were a variety of different materials that were shown. Would we get, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble matching that up with this, would we get? All of those kinds of materials or the, the basic ones would just be the branding and then some marketing? And then maybe? More materials would be, would be a little extra?
So what we'll get is the, the graphics, essentially, the samples, and we won't actually get.
Right.
Material, so.
Right. And I think the design.
Yes, exactly. So we'll be able to launch all the virtual, the social media and web presence immediately. And then we'll need to purchase banners, but we'll have the design done. And it would be a while before we do wayfinding or entry features, those are more expensive capital improvements. But we have enough in the budget to, to, I would want to put up banners right away and roll out the social media and the website. And perhaps one or two wayfinding signs just to replace the downtown district sign that we have, for example. What we could in the budget, I may, I may come to you mid-year and say, can we, I'd like to move some of the money from, we have a hundred thousand dollars in improvements, move it over to marketing, because we want to do X, Y, and Z. And you can decide at that time if it's worth it or you're going to wait until the next fiscal year.
Fine, and just to give us an expectation. So for roughly twenty five thousand dollars, we would get graphics and design to get us started. But to do, say, wayfinding or print materials, what's like ballpark, what are we going to be spending in the future for that kind of thing?
That, that depends completely on how extensive it is. So you can spend literally hundreds of thousands of dollars on wayfinding. For a giant system. Or we could, we can, my recommendation is we implement maybe two signs at a time. Keep adding, maybe even annually, we will have a couple more signs, important destinations as we keep adding on, rather than commit to fifteen signs or twenty signs.
So, because it sounds like this is a good start, but some of the things that were shown are going to require us, and hopefully we'll have more. But they will require us to, to invest significant dollars to get all those things.
Yes, like an entry feature is an example, depending on how elaborate it is, could be a hundred thousand dollars or it could be a forty thousand dollar feature.
I mean, that just gives us an expectation.
Yeah.
Of what we're heading to. So, very excited, thank you.
Mr. Rudd, are they going to give us options? They're going to provide us with some options? Or is it just going to be?
It's a reveal.
It's a reveal.
Yeah, and I've loved it every time. So I, I trust them.
So, Mary, can I ask a follow up to your question?
Yes.
What if you don't love it?
They'll work with us.
But, okay. So, you know, because again, we just want to know what to expect.
Little, little secret, me and Richard, they gave me a little preview, I said no. I took it up, I sent it back to them and they changed it and I love it, so. Don't give me a sneak peek.
Yeah, that's the only thing, I, I mean, I really have some.
I will show it to you unless I think it's, you're going to knock you off.
Okay. Commissioner Burton? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, we ready to? Vote, okay, we have a motion, acceptance, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will oppose, nay? Motion here is accepted, thank you. With that, I'm going to close out the CRA. Okay, our next on the agenda is Mindy. With Pinkout Putnam. And Mindy, while you're coming up, again, they have pink on it, and Mindy, while you're coming up, we did, the commissioners, we have to talk about this. And accept it, that we do have a proclamation for breast cancer awareness month. So, you want to go ahead and give us your presentation?
Sure, you guys have been so serious, so now it's going to be a little fun. You can get caught by Pinkout Putnam. Pinkout Putnam was started by the Free Women's Clubs, I'm a breast cancer survivor. And we raise funds to help victims right here in Putnam County, all of our money stays local. We do things like Pink You Out, you guys have been out here and I think it looks fabulous. And over the last four years, we raised thirty seven thousand dollars. So, this is our fifth year. And that's what we do, we were started by the Women's Club and we help people here in Putnam give breast cancer.
Thank you.
That's a quick version, so.
Mr. Rudd, do you want to, I know we have. We, you want to speak to the donation?
Certainly, so we were approached to participate in Pinkout Putnam, to pink out the city hall and provide a donation to Pinkout Putnam. So we told, go ahead, I'm certain, I felt the commission might be part of that. Providing those funds, so we brought it to you.
We did your building on credit. I know you have things.
I showed up and I said, we've been pinked out. Who said that? Who said that? And you did a great job, it definitely stands out, it stands out.
Okay, from one end of the county to the other, so I'm kind of morale.
You were busy. So commissioners, with that also, you've got, you should have the proclamation in front of you. And so it's a proclamation by the city of Crescent City declaring the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so I'm going to need approval, you want me to read the whole thing?
You need a motion.
I do need a motion of acceptance of this, we're going to need two motions, we're going to need a motion to accept this and we're going to need a motion also for the donation of the one hundred dollars out of our charitable funds. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
Well, you were first.
I love it when they fight over who's going to make the motion, okay. Who's going to make the motion?
I made a motion for confirmation, twenty one oh two.
And we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? It's, it, it really is, and it talks about there's an estimated two hundred and eighty one thousand cases that will be diagnosed in women this year.
Mary, could you read it, please?
Sure, the statistics is one in eight women.
One in eight. Whereas in twenty twenty one. Whereas in twenty-twenty-one, an estimated two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty new case invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women and an estimated twenty-six-hundred-and-fifty men will be diagnosed. And whereas if detected early, breast cancer can have a high rate of recovery. And whereas although treatment for breast cancer has greatly improved, it is the second leading cause of death among women. With approximately one in eight women being diagnosed at some point in their lifetime. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the incredible fortitude of breast cancer survivors and offer our heartfelt support to those currently battling this disease. And whereas raising awareness of this largely misunderstood disease will help to bring about acceptance, support, and solidarity and will help advocate for medical advances. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed on this fourteenth day of October, twenty-twenty-one, the City of Crescent City, Putnam County, Florida, and the Commission do hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer, Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Crescent City. And encourage all citizens to participate in the activities that will increase awareness, show support for those battling this disease, and honor those who have lost their lives to breast cancer. And I encourage everyone, when they tell you, get your checkups, get those checkups. I know too many people that skip just one year, just one year.
Early detection is the key. Um, we just got a proclamation in Wilaco two nights ago. Now we've got the proclamation here in Crescent City, so Wilaco's lack. So, we're going to have to get that in Wilaco. Because it was the Free Women's Clubs in those three cities that started this period.
Thank you. Well, you tell them, you know, Crescent City and Wilaco, they have it going on down here. Okay, so with that, we have, um, we did a motion. Okay, so we need another motion for the hundred dollars.
I know that we donate the hundred dollars for the A2, uh, from our A2 private organization's budget line. And, uh, for Pinkout Putnam.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Okay, do we have any discussion?
I just have a question.
So, Pinkout Putnam, the last, I know you guys are actually a five-oh-one-C-three, correct? We should be by the end of next week. It all happened so fast that, and, you know, I'm the committee director and I'm on boots on the ground. So that was just, and I'm a Women's Club president, so it, it, it just hasn't happened yet.
I mean, I've done the activities, I did the rush when we had it here. And, you know, it's one thing for individuals to give, but we've talked about having a policy for the city for donations. You know, we're, we're not giving our personal funds, at least not here, giving tax money. But you will be a five-oh-one.
Well, technically, we are operating under the auspices of the Wilaco Women's Club. That is a five-oh-one-C-four nonprofit.
Okay.
So, that helps me there.
So.
And so we are not a, we are a separate entity, but we will be a completely separate entity after we obtain our own five-oh-one-C-three. And so right now, we're operating under the Women's Club.
And so we make our check out to the Women's Club.
Well, you make it out to Pinkout Putnam because we actually have a separate account. We'll pink out Putnam.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay. Okay, Ms. Carries, thank you both.
Should I wait for the check or is it in the mail?
It's in the mail. And Mindy, do you, you got a copy of the, um?
You got it.
Okay.
Can I get a picture of you with my proclamation?
We didn't vote on the proclamation?
Yeah, well, we voted, we had one. It's signed.
Okay, then we, okay, well, then we need to vote. We need to vote on that, okay? I know we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Very.
Aye.
Okay, I was going to pass that.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, you want to, Mr. Redd?
Certainly, the next item is a request to purchase bucket truck. This item is in the Better Place Plan budget. We had budgeted sixty thousand dollars. We need to leave bucket truck. And, uh, Mr. Harris did find a truck for sixty-three thousand dollars. And feel confident we'll get the, the difference easily in, uh, selling the truck we have. The truck works, but the boom is not. So, uh, he is, he is here to answer any questions you might have. This is a budget item. I think we can recover the difference and perhaps more, um, through the sale of the existing truck.
Commissioners, do we have a motion of acceptance?
I surrender.
Okay, just.
We need a budget.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we can have discussion. Do we have any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I do. Um, my, my, yeah. And so you forget that. Um, my question is this, uh, the bucket truck, how often do we actually use a bucket truck? And would it be more feasible to rent a bucket truck when we need it, rather than purchase a bucket truck? Which also would include insurance, maintenance, gas, all of those things that kind of go with a bucket truck. Whereas if we're using it, I don't know, how many times do we use it?
Keith, do you want to come to the?
Seven times a year.
Could Keith come to the podium, please?
We use it to put up the flags. We use it to put up the Christmas decorations, which we hope we still get to do. We put up the flags twice a year. We will use it for trimming trees that we can do. And it will be used to pull equipment. Because we don't have the proper trucks for some of the equipment that we have to pull. My truck, the dump truck, is the only ones that can pull. I do got two people interested in the truck already. They're going to come look at it next week if we can sell it outright, instead of having to put it on the internet. That's the best way to do it. But I know it'll, we'll make the money back.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's, you know, sometimes to, to rent a bucket truck, um, for the day, really is kind of, doesn't cost a whole lot of money, not really.
Had to really check into it because we've always had a bucket truck.
So, I mean, if we're using it, uh, you know, even ten times a year, you, I think you can save money by actually renting rather than buying, but, but that's my thought on that. So, you know, it's just.
Mayor, Commissioner DeVito? I have a follow-up to that, and I think that is a very good thought. My, to me, the second question would be, uh, how, you know, what is the cost to rent something? How available is it? Because I remember once you folks had to fix, uh, something in the middle of the street in front of our house and we didn't have water for a week because they couldn't get the required machinery to come from Orlando to do that. So my question is, say if we buy this bucket truck that we need, so you would have it for what you need. And then we do an analysis to compare owning versus renting. Would we be able, if we decided we wanted to change, would we be able to sell the bucket truck that we had just bought for a reasonable return?
Yes, ma'am, we would. I'd say we'll get what we pay for. But it is a brand new truck. It is a twenty-nineteen, got seventeen thousand miles on it, but it's never been titled. It was a demo truck at the place that has it, but it's completely branded.
Is this the one you're talking about purchasing?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Something I had. I've had a lot of experience renting, um, lifts and high reaches. And it's challenging availability, and then you've got to have a pack when it's due back. And then if your project isn't finished, it's, it's, it's a challenge to have, and it's, it's great to have one in-house. Uh, I've been in cities where we had one, it was wonderful, and then where we didn't, you had to schedule everything and if it was an emergency, it was very difficult. We got to get a truck and there's not one available, so we've got to get one from another city. But it, it would be a great convenience and, and I do have a lot more banners that are going to go up, sorry Keith. And, uh, Christmas lights and a lot of things where a bucket truck would really be, be helpful.
Commissioner West?
I like the idea of having our own bucket truck, so that it's available when we need it. We've always had one and I agree with you. The things you rent aren't always as reliable either.
I just.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, we have to look at all of our options.
I do.
Yeah, we, we need to always look at all of our options. And so if this is something that Keith later on, you find that, you know, like Commissioner DeVito said, if you find later on that, you know, it would be, you know, more cost-effective.
When we used to rent the street sweeper.
Yeah.
It was fifteen hundred dollars a week. We'd keep it for a month or so. It was over six grand. And then we had to go get it. They didn't bring it to us. Then if it broke down, they had to send a mechanic. This truck will come with full warranty. I'm not sure what the bucket, as far as the warranty is. But, um, it's all new. And the truck we have, we did pay nineteen thousand dollars for it to use. And we put probably five or six grand in it in the last couple of years.
And it's why some of our flags right now are not looking.
Exactly.
I know there's been some concern about some of the flags out there and how they're looking.
None of my guys will stand on my shoulders to reach the flag.
Okay, I just, you know, I brought out.
No, that's, that's very good, very good.
I do appreciate it. I do.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion, we have a second for the purchase of this bucket truck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay? Okay. Don't lose out on it.
Go get it.
It's great, go get it.
Okay.
Go get it.
Now we've got the discussion of the Masonic Lodge demolition. I know that, do you?
Do you want to lead that?
Who wants to lead this off right now?
Yeah, so all.
We've got some developments.
I'll lead this off, um, it's been brought to, first it was brought to Mr. Redd's attention, to my attention. There may have been a problem with the conveyance of the property from, um, the Masonic Lodge to the City of Crescent City. Now, I don't have all the ins and outs of it, um, but it was brought to our attention yesterday. I do have a meeting, um, with the person that brought it to our attention on Tuesday. And they are a member of the Masonic Lodge, uh, with him and at least, at least him and hopefully some more of the members. So that we can work through it and get it straightened out. So I just would suggest right now not to do anything drastic until we can get that figured out. And then we'll be at, at the latest, because I know Commissioner, Commissioner Burton's going to ask when it's going to be done. I, I will, this is going to move to the front of everything that I need to do. It will be the, at the latest, the next meeting, and if I can have something, I can send the email to all of the Commissioners if we have any developments before the next meeting and just keep you updated on the processes we work through it. And to add to that, I would, uh, you, we've provided you some grant information, your packet. And for a, a hundred percent grant, if you apply for less than a half a million dollars. So I think that's ample funding to, to restore that building into a museum. We'd need to keep ownership for ten years if we in fact own it. And then we, it could become a home to not only the, our existing historical society, but also of African-American museum and particularly emphasizing the history of the Masonic Lodge here in the community. Just a lot of opportunity there. We have till the end of November to submit that. So my recommendation would be to direct us to start working on that application. As we work through any, uh, unclothing the ownership issue and hopes that we can apply. Wouldn't know about the grant until June, when the legislature adopts the budget to be appropriation. And so if we did not get the grant at that time, then we'd have to take action accordingly. If we did get the grant, then we would have a year to restore the building. So in the next month, we would need to get some estimates on what it would cost to redevelop the building, to restore it. And get letters of support, a number of things for the application cycle.
Uh, that's a great op, I mean, it's just a great opportunity, yes, or?
I would like to speak, I, I didn't want to say it then because I was one of the members way back there. For years, I was a member.
Yes.
I put a lot of dollars in it out of his bank's budget.
We saw your name, your name is on the wall inside the building.
See, I've got a picture of it. I have a picture of it. You know, this is one of those that, um, has not been, I don't think it's, it's anything that has been taken lightly because this is history and it's history here in Crescent City.
We'll, we'll secure it some more. If you decide to do this, we would further secure it. There's, there's some, uh, access in the back now. We need to clear away the trees that are.
I mean, I, I personally would like to see if we have this opportunity, um, that I would like to see Commissioners support that. And.
Well, this has been a major, uh, problem is what it's going to cost to restore it. We don't have that money for it and it's just sitting there deteriorating. But if we can find a way to fix it, I'll give you the grant.
Now, is this something that we'll have to stay with the city or could some other organization actually take this project down?
We would have to own the property for ten years. But it, it does need to be a cultural site, like a museum or a cultural center. So I think we could, um, we could lease it to the Historical Society as an example. To, because, you know, they have a home now until the school's demolished and build a new school. So in five or six years, they'll be looking for a home. I think it's just a great combination of factors coming together. Because we'd have to look at what we use this for, if, if we got it all fixed up. And I think, uh, for the purposes of the grant, it does need to be a African-American cultural site. And, and it is in fact, so I think it's just a, a whole host of things came together. I think just hopefully at the right time and get the application done and submitted.
Okay, I've got to make a motion, tables, so.
Well.
Ms. Dickens can, uh.
Well, under the current, Charles, let's, we need to talk about that because if you're going to go ahead and, and we need to get the application, the grant application.
Until November thirtieth.
We have until November thirtieth to, to submit that, okay?
But hopefully you'll have some answers for us before November thirty.
And when it was brought to our attention, just to either, it wasn't like a, hey, we, we want it back. It was a, hey, we want to get together with y'all and do this the right way.
Okay.
Just, and obviously they're hopeless that it would be preserved. But that's neither here nor there, but so it's not a, hey, we want it back type deal.
Well, and, and that's fine. I'm just saying for tonight, though, I don't think the discussion is ready for tonight. To kind of, to tell you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just let's. Kind of stand with it all. I mean, I like the whole idea, just what I'm saying. So it's just a matter of getting all the pieces together before we vote, I guess.
Commissioner DeVito?
Yeah, so what I'm understanding is that, um, the Masonic Lodge is more interested in resolving the conveyance if we are of mind to preserve the building, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That it would be more likely. Because the, the issue on the table we had discussed in the past, should we, uh, put it up for sale? Should we, I mean, the, the proposal on the table was to let a salvage company rip the inside out of it. Which I am personally not in favor of. And, um, I do have, uh, Mr. Stady spoke, uh, very eloquently, had the other gentleman spoke very eloquently. I have Mr. Stady, the Jim Stady, the architect, I have the letter that he wrote to us in June. And, um, his proposal was that the city, uh, take the steps to stabilize the building, which I think would involve a new roof, is that correct, Jim? Right, but I'm saying, but I'm not expecting that, but anyway. Jim, if you go back and look at his letter, which I think we all got a copy on the June thirtieth, whether we get the grant, um, or not, it, his suggestion was, um, and this would be in the event we did not get a grant, um, is that that property could be a, uh, potentially a commercial building that would be a focal point for revitalization of North Main Street, given its history. And like the mayor, I went in, uh, Mr. Redd made that possible and I took photos. And it's just amazing. We, we should be sharing the photos of what the inside looks like. And the names of all the, uh, members, male and female, who participated in the Masonic Lodge activity. So my suggestion would be that we, uh, I think we should make some kind of decision tonight, um, about whether we would at least like to try to save it and apply for the grant. I mean, Charles, when would you need to start working on the grant?
I would start gathering the information right away. And I could just begin that process. I would start gathering the information right away. And I could just begin that process and then come back. You think you'd have something like that?
But.
Yeah, yeah, no, and.
Until we determine ownership, I don't think we can do anything at this point in time. I think we need, I do think to, to, to title it. There's an, there's possible an ownership issue.
Right, but what I'm hearing is that the people who we have the issue, have to resolve the issue with, um, that they might be encouraged by an indication that we were actually interested in preserving.
Well, I think they, we.
I think we are, we, it, number one is if we own it, I guess, and number two is if we can get a grant.
Yeah.
I mean, because we don't have it in the budget to preserve it if we cannot get the grant. That's the way I'm kind of seeing the whole thing.
And I think.
It really is gonna hinge on the grant.
I'm gonna ask Commissioner Banks to weigh in on this.
Yeah, well, you know, uh, a lot of the old time was going on. Now, it, it's a very few uh, lives at this point that would, uh, initially, when the lodge was initially bought, uh, bought and put there. So I think, uh, Mr. Midjune, myself, and maybe several, eight more uh, members are still alive. So it will, it really would be something good for the next generation out there to see and to know.
Oh, well.
I have, I don't know.
Wait, just one second before you make a motion, Bobby. What is your recommendation at this point?
I just, as a legal statement, that we would hold off on any, any major um, use of the city funds or anything like that. Um, that would be my only concern.
Okay.
And as far as making an expression of the board that there's an intention or a, a hope that it could be restored, I think anything like that is fine.
Okay.
And that's my motion.
Okay, Commissioner DeVito.
So I would move that the City of Crescent City, uh, resolve um, to do everything within our power to preserve that building and um, that in doing so, we would encourage um, the Masonic Lodge to complete the conveyance and so that we could work with them to preserve this building.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second, sir? Okay, do we have any more discussion? Commissioner Burke, I know that you also have some.
Well, I'm gonna, uh, would you please repeat what you.
Essentially, that we resolve our intent to do everything we can to preserve the Masonic Lodge. And we encourage the organization um, to work with us to resolve the ownership in our favor. So that we could potentially work with them to preserve the building.
I don't know that we'd be working with them.
Right. It's not a grant.
Well, not, not necessarily, because the, the grant is for one thing, but what Mr. Stagie proposed um, is that I mean, potentially you could do this in stages. You could stabilize the building. And when I say work with the Masons, I think that if we apply for the grant, we could use their support in that grant. And if it came down to um, private fundraising, we could use their support as well. I mean, I think that they have an, an emotional stake in this building and in the future of the community. And that's what I'm trying to express when I say work with them. And this would have to be a community project with that, as to what, and not just.
Unless we get the grant, the grant would, would cover it completely.
My grant would cover it. And the grant, by the way, if, if, was that a grant? I'm sorry. I'm terrible about putting names, excuse me.
That's okay. Um, Commissioner Burton.
The grant, as soon as the grant is given, you have two years to, to finish the project. So you have to kind of also keep that in mind. So, so it, it, it really, you, you have to make sure that, you know, once we get this thing, we, we, man, it's on. And, and we've got everything that we wanna do ready. And so I, I, I think, let's just make sure before we jump that we, first of all, uh, can, can do these things and we'll jump maybe at the next meeting. I think we need to take it right now, just do and not make any commitments right now towards it. But once again, I think just, we just need to to slow our rubber a little bit and make sure we're going to vote.
An expression of support and intent is not a commitment. And when I said that it would be a community effort, I'm very familiar with grants. And what I was referring to was when you apply for a grant, usually you need to show the community support.
You have to have letters of support. Okay, okay, wait, okay, everybody. We have to have letters of support. We do have to have letters of support.
And so my concern is, this is a critical juncture for the building. Um, if the P doesn't jump over the style, we won't, won't get home tonight. The building is in a precarious position. Um, I certainly would like to convey to the lodge organization that we are very serious about preserving it, to encourage them um, to complete the conveyance and to work with us. Because if that does not happen, I don't think this building can be saved. That is my impression.
I think what, what we need to, in my opinion here, is that we need to give direction to Bobby at this point to work with the parties that he needs to work with to secure ownership. And at the same time, we need to show the intent that should we get that ownership taken care of, that we will proceed with applying for the grant. I think because without the grant money, we're still looking at a building that's gonna have a lot of issues, and we don't have anywhere to go with it as far as financially with funds from the city. So I think that that shows the intent that if we have something to direct Bobby to work with the parties and also the understanding that we, the Commission, are in support of going forward with applying for this grant.
And I'm happy to so, that we so direct Bobby and that we are in support of going forward with the grant to preserve that building.
We have to get rid of your.
Yeah, we have to. You have to withdraw your first, yes.
But, well, I'm happy to withdraw my first motion and make that motion.
I'll withdraw my second. And then Bobby can bring this back at the next meeting. Okay, so with that, we have a motion.
And we would need a second.
And we need a second. One second. We have a motion and a second. We have any more discussion?
I'm going to send it to Bobby because my name is in the building.
Do you want to show your support?
Yeah, I'm, I'm one hundred percent, but I better put, put my name because I don't want no reaction.
Okay.
He doesn't have to do that.
I think, yeah, I think he wants to be part of this. I, I really do. So we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna go ahead and Karen, I'm gonna ask you to roll, roll call for us, please.
Okay, Commissioner Burton. Yeah. Commissioner Banks.
Yeah.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito.
Aye.
Mayor Mines.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes that Bobby, you're to work with the parties to secure full ownership. And then, and it is our intent that once that happens, and once that happens, that we will apply for the grant. I also want to say that Commissioner Banks, and, and I don't know who we need to reach out to, but.
Um, it was interesting.
Well, as far as the community and, and that building, um, if, if we're not gonna be able to do anything until June, if we're not gonna be able to do anything to June, if there's anybody in the community that would like to assist with kind of cleaning it up a little bit. I know we've got some cleanup that we're gonna do to it once we secure that. But I just think, you know, this is a, again, this is something in the community, and it's part of the community and taking pride. And, and I think if we're willing to make that effort, we hope that the community will make that effort as well. So. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to uh, the ARPA funds, uh, to our Historic Society. Is this meet your, is this?
Yes, uh, I think it's right in line. Uh, I think this sort of society is behind that and.
Okay, thank you for all your efforts also, for everyone that's been involved and for the input that we've had from the community, and that's important. Okay, with that, you want to?
All right, uh, Commissioner, on, as you recall, on September thirtieth, we had a workshop to discuss uh, possible uses for the uh, American Rescue funds and sort of the consensus. It was a workshop, so we weren't voting, but the discussion led us to uh, putting together a recommendation to you to uh, first project made to design and construct a ambulance station or a dormitory facility for ambulance crew. And uh, once that was done, the thing, the funds that were available, uh, get a project shovel ready for an infrastructure project such as a water main project. There are several of those that are, um, we hope to apply for community development block grants. And this would increase our number of points, so we get a better chance of getting a block grant. And then finally, if there were still funds, this would be in the second year, um, some potential park improvements that you, again, would revisit before we did that, uh, such as lighting for the ball fields. My recommendation to you in considering the um, ambulance station would be, we would give the architect a budget. We could say, design a facility, as an example, that is a four hundred thousand dollar facility. And then they would bring us back a design of four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, whatever we gave them. And then we would construct that. We have enough, we have the first half of the funds in the bank now, so we would begin the design, construction this fiscal year. And then when we finish that up, we'd have the second check uh, a year from now. And then we'd move into uh, designing one of our infrastructure projects, or perhaps more. You may decide to use all the remaining funds and do two or three infrastructure projects. Those would be the design and engineering. As I showed you, those are approximately a hundred thousand dollars each to prepare them for construction. So tonight, we're asking you just to accept this ranking, which would, would give us our direction to proceed with a RFQ for an architect to then design to our budget um, for the ambulance station. We bring that back to you, approve the design, the construction costs. Knowing that we can revisit. For instance, if an architect came back and said, I can't, you can't get anything for less than seven hundred thousand dollars. You may decide at that point, okay, let's, let's do infrastructure projects as an example. So you'll have that opportunity. So this isn't set in stone and you're not stuck with your decision tonight. But we do need to designate it. We'll put it into the budget, in a budget amendment, depending on your vote tonight.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have a, a motion for acceptance of his ranking?
I assume so.
Okay, do we have a second? Then we can have discussion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Okay, we want to have discussion.
Yeah, discussion. I, I, I was thinking when he was helping, uh, and we conferred with the county yet to see how they wanna they might not want to be part of that move down this, to this, in the city to that bill, once we get it.
Yes, sir. Uh, and our fire chief has been in conversation, uh, and of course be a big part of it. Didn't move forward if they were to say, we're not gonna move. We decided, we thought about it. We, most recently, we caught them in their budget cycle as well. So I think now that they, uh, the smoke is cleared from their budget process, we may get a more definitive answer. And so we could come, we may come back to you in a month and say, you know, the county said, they're not gonna move the ambulance. So then we would ask you to adjust your, we would move the funds.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, this is not in, we're not setting this in.
This is, you know, this is, allow us to amend the budget and uh, and do the RFQ. We have to come back to you to choose a firm. So I'll bring an RFQ for your approval next month. And then we'll bring a firm back in one day to that. You know, it's a, it's a slow process.
Okay. Commissioner DeVito.
I share Commissioner Banks' concerns that we get uh, a confirmation from the county that this is going to work. I, I think you said that very, very well. Um, the other thing is, and this is one of the corrections to the minute. When we had the workshop and discussed what to do with this funding, um, I mentioned that one of the permissible uses might be to set aside an amount of money for homeless assistance services. You, which of course now the county has no money for that, and we have no money for that. It is a permissible use from these funds. You have to contract with a final C three that does those kinds of services. And given the fact that we have had some serious recent problems with people in our area who are homeless, both this year and in the past years, um, my suggestion would be, and again, not set in stone, that we set aside between five and ten thousand dollars um, and see if we can find one of the local nearby nonprofits that provides homeless services such as housing voucher, case work, transportation, connecting people, hopefully with assistance to get stabilized. Then, so we could use those funds for the next couple of years when we have a situation. And again, not set stone, but that we, um, I've been doing the research. I've got some information from the Florida Council on Homelessness that's attached to D C R that I serve on. Um, it's not easy to get this information, but I am working on it.
Okay, do we want to add that to the list? So that if we have funds available at the end, that is something Commissioners that you want to consider as part of this? Or do you want to stay with where we are now and see where we go down the future, and where we are in the future? Sure. You're gonna have to amend the motion. You'd have to amend the motion. Right now, so we're good? Okay. Commissioner, you, you what? Okay, Commissioner Burton, you wanna pull your mic out, please?
Yeah. I'm not sure why they were ranked the way that they were ranked. Personally, uh, I, I think that uh, we ought to be looking at to conduct the engineering and design phase of the public works infrastructure project first. And then with the, you know, getting how much that would cost. You know, I do have a little on Prospect Street. I'm not sure what's going on on Main Street. I'm not sure all was needed there. But I do know on Prospect Street, we, on North Prospect Street, we have one park, I can, along the whole street. So just kind of keep that in mind.
Okay.
It would help my insurance, I'm sure, to have a fire back there on North Prospect Street. But in, in Main Street, I believe just has as far as I know, that I'm on anything on Main Street. I'm not really sure, but there are some issues on Main Street. But, but I would prefer to see um, the infrastructure of the city for everyone's sake. Living city be done first. Um, I'm certainly then for, uh, if you want to do a facility for the fire station. I'm for that. I, I can't quite understand how moving, um, since we have a facility that's, what, a mile away that where the two E, EMTs are right now, where they sleep, well, it's not too far away from where we are. Um, so I'm not necessarily sure why. Maybe, maybe I'm being forced, but maybe it's nice to have four guys sleeping all together, not all together now, not all in the same bed and in the same pumps. But it, you know, in the same area, but, but uh, I, I just think that before we go ahead and contract, even with an architectural firm, that we probably can contract with a construction firm for, for this type of building that you want to do the base. I don't think it would cost quite so much money with construction firm to develop uh, what's needed for that, but um, I, I, that could be second. So I, I would prefer to see it flipped. You know, where the um, public work infrastructure project would be first, and then the uh, fire station, and then whatever is left. First, you know, the whole ball, the, the, the lighting, um, I think I mentioned to you, Charles, that uh, we need to look at a better way to keep lighting. There's new ways to, to lighting that doesn't involve plugging it into a, a hole, you know? We, we have all kinds of different solar panels and all kinds of things that we do, but that, that's my opinion, okay?
Mr. Redd, do you wanna share what, how it's, why it's ranked the way it is? I know that there. I know that there's an issue with housing that we have right now with our fire station, so this would...
Sure, the ranking, just what I felt was the consensus from the meeting, when we wrapped it up, I think I reiterated at the end of the meeting, that's what I would bring to you. And we could, we could flip it out, my request, if we did, was to give me a cap, because we could spend more than half the money on the preparing the infrastructure project, so we would say, we'll spend $300,000 on an infrastructure grant, and then the balance would be towards the, so it'd be about almost $500,000, $400,000, some thousand for the ambulance station, so we have to cap it, because we could, we could easily eat up more than, and not have enough left for the ambulance station, so we could flip it to your preference. But the ambulance station does provide us with an opportunity to house a few firefighters, was the goal, to begin to have a more full-time fire station, we could have the two, the ambulance crew, and potentially two firefighters, and the ambulance crew could potentially be also firefighter certified, so then we'd have four full-time, begin to have a full-time presence here in the city of firefighters, by utilizing the new ambulance dorm facility, that would sort of be, rather than just moving in here, kind of opens the door, because we can no longer sleep in our current facility, you know, unless they put a cot in the front room, so it's, it's just a way to kind of inch us forward with our fire service capabilities, as well as have the ambulance here.
May I speak to that as well? And to Commissioner Burton's concern? I think that, as Charles has said, it's not just a matter of moving the EMT people here. What I heard our fire chief say is that the fire station allowing, allowing a good up-to-date place for volunteer firefighters to sleep is a part of his plan, that is very important to making sure that we continue to have fire service in the city of Crescent City. Right now, we rely on, solely on volunteer support, our fire chief is finding it very difficult to attract volunteers, and that was, as he presented, a cornerstone of his ability to attract volunteers as well. He presented kind of a well-rounded plan, where we're in January, hopefully going to increase the funding a little bit, we would be a more desirable place for people to volunteer, keeping in mind that they come from other counties to do this, they would have a place to sleep. And when you think about it, we do have hydrants on South Main Street, but if we have the hydrants, but we do not have firefighters to operate the trucks, then we've got, we have our priorities a little bit out of whack, so I think to me, in deference to the fire chief, he really did present this as part of a very thoughtful plan to cover our personnel needs for firefighting. So, to me, the rankings, for that reason, would seem in the right order, we've got to do something about our fire service, and that was a component of it.
Well, the housing, the housing is a major component of our, the housing is a major component of our fire service, right? So this would provide it for both.
Mr. Rudd, Commissioner, what's the possibility of having a separate grant from the state, like we've done before, for the water mains on Main Street and Prospect?
Well, we will be applying for community development block grants for the construction.
Right.
So this would give us more points, we'd say it's designed, engineered already, and so I think we'd be more likely to get a grant awarded, then we could use it all for construction, because of the project's design, that's my, my strategy.
You're saying, and if you show your shovel ready, so if we get ourselves shovel ready, it brings you up the rank?
Right, right. Well, in this particular, in this particular thing that he has here, though, the infrastructure project, such as the water main, your patients on either Main Street or Prospect Street, so if we wanted the other side, this one, flip a coin, a coin, and say, I guess we'll have this shovel ready for Main Street, if the coin is heads, or is that what we're doing?
Well, we would, we would let you know which one was more eminently needed, if we call, if you're looking at, advise us on what project we need to move forward, would be better.
Say one of them all.
Yeah, yeah, well, we...
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say.
And then if we design them all, one of my concerns is, we, they would sit, until, as we, every year, we apply for one block grant, get it, can't get another one until we close that out, so those plans are getting older and older, as we wait for the grants on, so...
So you can't get a block grant to do both of them?
It's, I think $750,000 is the maximum, some of those projects were $1 million or more, so we may scale them back, or have to find another grant condition, so it's, yes, construction's significant, I think there was one that was about $800,000, which, those were estimates.
Most of them are over $1 million.
Yeah, they're, they're big projects.
Okay, so with that, commissioners, we have the original motion to accept this is currently ranked, and we have a second. So we want to have any more discussion? Are we ready to move on this motion?
I will call the question.
Okay. Yes. Okay, you want to?
I made a motion to call a question.
Yeah. Yep, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, aye, have it, thank you very much, Commissioner. Okay.
My time is the discussion of the lease agreement, what's called title, this is something that was brought to my attention when I started by the interim city manager, that we had a lease that had expired, so my request was just from some direction to draft a new lease, could be a month to month, could be annual, but to get some direction from you, folks from Gulltown are here to discuss the...
They're here too.
So our request is just for direction, how to...
Would you like to speak? Thank you for sitting here, sorry you had to...
Oh, no worries, absolutely, I love speaking, that's my wife. But I'm JJ Gullett, in a hill from San Mateo is where I live, and so I do know quite well, you guys have gas up there, I've talked to David over two years about trying to get gas to my house with the construction of the highway, and the, the road, so yes, we love the gas down there. And also have Krista, go ahead.
Krista Harrison, manager of the Gulltown office here.
So she's been with me for a long time, but I think it's been about two years, we are in Holdover Tennessee mode right now, when we first started talking about this, this lease, entered into it, I believe Commissioner West and Commissioner Banks were in the meeting two years ago, it's probably around this time, two years ago, but we entered into the lease in July of 2014, just a little background on it, and, you know, I know we're sort of, you know, that the customers on this end of the deal, at Gulltown Title B, and where the less ease, we look at it more like a partnership, because we enjoy working in and with the city of Crescent City, you know, we help collect utility bills, when people buy themselves houses, and work with them on finding and helping or assisting and instructing people to correct code issues and code lanes, Krista's even done some training with the local estate brokers on the effects of code lanes and the cross-attaching effect of code lanes, but, so we look at it as a partnership, and from our end, Crescent City's been a great partner with us being in town, working in town, and, and of course, and also some of the other south foot in the communities, but back to July of 2014, we entered into a lease that our great partner, Crescent City, gave us two months free grant while we were remodeling. So we actually started paying, that's why our lease was originally, what, five years and two months, 62 months, we've been there now seven years, three months, so hopefully we've been great tenants, I have no idea if we ever paid a penny in rent, I'm assuming we have, with the wife, is that, she doesn't want to touch bills. But what we did not discuss, when, when we talked about us moving in Holdover Tennessee, I didn't think it was proper at the time, we actually had bought Jay Asbury's building in May of 2019, so it's about three or four months before we had the meeting, and I didn't want to make that as a public announcement, I hadn't thought that was more on Mr. Asbury's, his preference of when he wanted to make that public, but we were originally planned on having remodeling of that done in the end of 2019. We had a water vent in that office in, in Palatka, I called it a water vent, it was on my wife's birthday, beginning of 20, so pretty much last year, we struggled on getting 3,000 square feet put back together, that was destroyed in this water vent. So, we've been in Holdover Tennessee mode a little bit longer than, than, than we were thinking, when we spoke in 2019 about the Holdover Tennessee, I acknowledge, I know the Holdover Tennessee is, it's a two-week notice, you know, if one party wants to terminate the, the Holdover Tennessee mode, I said, you know, we don't really, you know, we would not want to just call up our partners, say, hey, Crescent City, by the way, we're out today, we're, you know, we're, we're done remodeling. I committed, I think it was 60 or 90-day notice at that point, which, you know, it's going to take more than 60 or 90 days, once we are shovel ready on the remodeling to get that done. So we are in Holdover Tennessee mode, and I don't know if we have a recommendation on how we want to continue us in occupancy, we are, we are ready, there's, you know, one caveat, I don't know if Mr. Rudd has talked with the commissioners about the Edgewood Street, besides 234 North, North Summit, I've been sort of using that as a crutch, if I didn't want to start, make construction, because that's what us, it's going to involve, like, doing the parking lot around the back of the building, and so I, and being, it took me all years to remodel from a water vent in Palatka, I understand current events and the changeover of personnel works, I know this, the city with the former manager committed to really just do a curb cut for us in the back, and give the, the side of a bench more right beside our rebuilding fix, that I didn't feel was safe for public to, especially for AVA compliance, to go from a parking lot right now, which is grass, and then go up on this street, the only thing we didn't discuss with the former city manager at the time, back in 2019, was the sidewalk, when we discussed with the commission, I had told Patrick that I would actually pay to, or pay to put the sidewalk in, you know, to get the road and the curb cut, so that's why we are still in Holdover Tennessee mode, so that's a little bit of background of, of why we've been able to be some good partner for seven years and three months in the office, I know Krista's ready, she's growing, hopefully taking care of people moving in and around the, the community, so we want to continue to do that, so I don't know, you've made a recommendation to the commission about how we want to proceed with our Tennessee, or if the commission has any questions on me about? Now, I would like to...
Commissioner West, you have something to?
No, I'm just trying to put this all together, because you want a sidewalk on Edgewood and Summit, right? Your new building, Jay Asbury's old building.
Yeah, I have, I have the pictures, I mean, I just had drawn on the GIS, you don't mind, I...
They have it in the packet.
Okay, so we have that, in your packet, it's a big blown-up picture, and I just did this pretty much freehand, but if you're looking at it, I sort of have it going in, where we'll put the sidewalk in, I'm definitely not opposed to seeing it up.
The city, the city.
Gets from it, yes.
We'll get it, we'll get it, that way you know you're looking at this, the same one I was looking at.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, there's sidewalk, yeah, do you have a motion to do that?
Yeah. It's a packet, but it's...
Whatever it was, Krista was...
It's the same one.
She has a better copy?
It's the same one.
Keep going.
That's the same one.
It's the same one, okay, I've got that.
So...
So, so yes, ma'am, Commissioner West, I feel our clients definitely need a way to traverse the parking lot in the back, especially, they need AVA.
The curb, though, is not what has prevented you from doing any improvements to the building, though, is it? Me, that...
No, really, what truly has prevented is just circumstance with bits up, and then, but I've been using that as a crutch, just, ma'am.
Oh, no, try, wait, I missed the statement. Commissioner Burton, and then Commissioner DeVito?
Um, I looked at all that today, and so basically, the sidewalk that you want is where the cars just pull in, is that it? Are you going to not have cars pull in off of Edgewood to park there? Is that what you're talking about, in the little, like, alcove, I call it, that's close to the building?
Right on the side of the building, that backs up to the side, to the parking lot, but y'all...
Correct. Okay, so you don't, you no longer want people parking, correct? Correct, we, we're going to want them to park in the back, and then where that alcove is, they have the sidewalk, correct? Okay, so, so I, okay, that's good, I like that, because I don't like cars pulling out like that, I don't like what Yash does, I don't like what these people do on 17, where they back out on 70, but anyway, that's good, I like that. So, what exactly are you, I mean, how long would you need to, you know, to fix the building? Looking right now, it's looking a little, I'm going to say, it's shabby, and, and the back, and the back of it, you know, I mean, I'm sure you're going to have to pave it for parking, what's your estimate for actually getting your building ready to bring people in, what, what's your timeline for that? When we start, I believe, with some other construction we've been doing, I think it's going to be a six-month minimum project, once, once we're shovel ready, is what we're talking about, and from now, it's about two, three months to be to that point. Okay, so you're talking about nine months till a year total? And I've been saying, you know, in half, half jokingly, but just knowing, again, within the environment, how long everything's taken, you know, in 19, we wanted to start construction beginning of 20, so, and then, in 20, I'm like, well, we hope to start construction by the, you know, the end of 21, so right now, I'm hoping to start at the beginning of the year, start the model. So what I, what I, I'm not going to put any dollars to it, but to give him a, a chance to rent what he has right now for a certain amount of money per year, and give you that year to get your new place ready, and then after that year, whatever we were charging you, we're going to double it, if you, in other words, you got a year to get it done, and at that point, we're going to bring that rent up, where it's kind of, you know?
Market value.
Yeah, because right now, it's pretty low, you're getting pretty good deal, so, but I'm not putting, I'm not going to put the number on there, okay, I'm not sure what kind of number we want to rent, but you see what I'm trying to say? I wouldn't even be able to put it back on the tax roll and buy it from the city, so I don't think anyone's ever thought about that. I don't know.
Well, I recognize...
Yes, Commissioner DeVito?
You guys are nice people, and I don't know where Krista moved, I'm very sorry that she moved out of her residence, I know she's happy somewhere, and there's great people, but you guys are wonderful, but I am very confused about what we are being asked to do today, are we being asked to extend your lease, or are we being asked about the sidewalk, or both?
Well... Well, so. I believe what I'm being asked is why and what is the status quo? Of us being the listings, being the tenants in, in, in where we are at, um, at one seventeen.
Okay.
So, and when Mr. Rudd and I first started talking about it, I said, well, we sort of got some correlating addresses here.
Okay.
You, you know, I'm using that as a, as a, as a crunch and. To stay in one seventeen with the two thirty-four, so. I, I don't think I'm asking the commission to do anything per se. So I, to me, it's actually the other, our commissioners asking what's the status quo.
Okay, because right now you're on a month-to-month lease, correct?
Correct.
Are you actually asking us for the sidewalk or are you just filling us in?
So while I was updating you on, on the history. Um, I would love to ask for sidewalks, but I had already committed in nineteen that I would put the sidewalks.
Good, because I think that's the ordinance. I think it actually requires you to do the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Um, so that's good. Okay, you're updating us. So, um, I guess. Um, and I am, you know, thrilled that you folks bought Mr. Asbury's building and that you're planning to occupy it because Gullett is really an asset, but. Um, I feel like somehow we need to bring this. Um, to a specific proposal, then maybe that's something that we should direct Mr. Rudd to work with you on. Because there's, in consideration of other people who are waiting here, we have some complex issues still on the agenda. Um, so I want to make sure we resolve things for you, but. We have to, we have to do other people's business too and we have to figure out what we're talking about. So.
Well, I think what we're talking about here is we have a lease.
Yes.
We have a lease that's month-to-month and do we want to continue to go month-to-month or do we want to do a date certain? In hopes that you will have construction done on Mr. Asbury's place. Is that kind of where we are, Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
At this point, so that's what he's proposing to us. And so I don't know that we want to kick this can down the road right now and they have also. This is important to them and they have been sitting.
Come back to you with the, the lease next month, a proposed, newly.
Yeah. A proposed, a proposed newly. Do you feel that if we were to do the lease for another year, we were to extend you out for another year at your current rate, at the current rate? Do you feel by then you would be able to be up and running in the other building?
Yes, that was my question. Would my wife look like when I said yes?
Okay, because that's our concern because right now we have a vacant, we have a building that's sitting there vacant and you know what happens to a vacant building and it's right on our main street. And we're trying really hard to progress, you know, and grow this city and, and, and take pride and, and, and clean up all of the properties that we can. And so that's part of it. We would like to see, we definitely want to see Gullett stay here. I think we all are in agreement with that.
Yes.
Yes.
But we would really like to see you occupy that, that building and there'd be life back in that building.
Let me speak to that real quick. I'll do the, I'll ask, do we have possession of that building now? Okay, I just got a key today.
You just got a key today, okay.
Yeah, so we were actually going to go check it before we got here. We got tied up.
So I think what we commissioners, what we can do at this point in time is we can go ahead. If somebody wants to make a motion to it, to extend this lease, Mr. Rudd, you can. And body, or, or attorney, I'm sorry, Mr. Pickens, yeah, to do it one year. And at that time or prior to that, we probably would have to revisit it or ask that you put that responsibility on you. That you come back to us if you feel like at that point in time, you're not going to be ready to, to relocate. Is that, is that fair? Do you feel that's fair? Okay, commissioners, do we feel that's fair?
Yes, I think ten, ten.
And then what you're also asking at the same time is you're willing to put in the sidewalk, but you want us to do the curving. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, the curving and which, because we, you cannot put a sidewalk. On to Edgewood right now because the curving.
Because the curving, okay. And Mr. Rudd, you've spoken to Keith and we're all in favor. I don't know where he went.
That little area needs to be torn out so you can put a curb and a sidewalk there. That's what you're saying, yeah.
So we would work in conjunction with you on that, is that correct?
How are we defining the curb?
It's along edge, is it Edgewood?
Edgewood would be on.
There is a curb right past his property that goes down, but he wants to extend it up to, uh, Summit. And what he's asking is, there is a little bump out here. Right, right there.
And. That's parked there.
And it's. It's a bad, bad shape, but.
There's a hole there.
There is a curb made out of the street as far. All that needs to be taken out. We need to extend that curb.
From the corner to his driveway?
To his driveway right in here, a curb here so he can put that hot sidewalk there.
Put a curb on the edge of the road.
Right.
Okay, well, man, should we not have a cost on it enough to vote for that to come back with the lease perhaps?
We, we can attempt to come back, but we're having a terrible time getting concrete bids at all, so we'll.
And that's going to change too because we're not ready to do this right now. You're not ready to put the sidewalk in. You're not ready to do that at this given date.
Well, he's got it here. We'll get the sidewalk more than likely when we are working on however we want to pay the, the actual parking lot, which will be near the end of.
So probably at the end. So concrete's going to change the price of concrete, building materials. I think it's just more. Okay, okay, so commissioners, I need some motions.
I move that we, um, direct Mr. Rudd to work with Gullett title to come back. Uh, with a proposed lease that, we're talking about a one-year lease, correct?
Yes.
Right, to come back with proposed one-year lease. Um, and also give us an idea of. Rough, what the rough cost would be of the, uh, curving work.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, it carries. Thank you. You're happy with that? You're happy with that?
I am.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for all you do for the community.
A pleasure. We thank you for, for us.
Thank you for being so patient.
Yeah, thank you for being so patient. Sorry, it's.
Man.
Yes. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Mr. Gullett, Krista, do y'all, do you want to stay or, um, we've got a, I, I hate to ask you if you want, but we have the lien issue that's coming up. I don't know if Krista wants to stay and speak to that. That's going to be, um.
I'll, I'll, I'll stay.
You're familiar with? The property that we're talking about?
No, they, they haven't been briefed at all. It's just they knowledgeable on, you know, the, how a sale can occur with liens on the property.
That's up to, that's up to you, Mr. Rudd, if you think that they. We have another presentation, so and then it's, and then it's coming up, and then it's coming up.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rudd. Thanks. She didn't push her microphone.
So, good evening, mayor, commissioners. Uh, this time for you tonight is sort of a housekeeping issue or, uh, more along the way of getting our house in order. It's made aware, we have a number of properties that have, uh, have liens on them sometimes for decades. Um, just sitting there and, and some of them, the, the fines are actually continuing to accrue. Feeling the, the violations have been addressed. Some of them have not been addressed. So I, I wanted to bring this to you just to get some direction. Uh, and my recommendation in my memo was for these larger to, uh, if possible, move to foreclosure. Uh, and our attorney is going to instruct us on that process and if it's worthwhile, um, or to, um, clear them, do something with them, uh, as we move forward. Is we, we'll have more cases coming in the future and these have been, as you can see, they've been here for quite some time. So this first one, two thirty Central Avenue example was initially two thousand and eight. The violation was corrected. The fine was reduced to thirty-two hundred dollars, but then that was not paid, so it, it went back, reverted back to the original amount. Twenty thirteen, it's been sitting since then. This is, um, forty East Grand Rondo, this property, this fine is still running, remaining violation. It's up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. These numbers are a week old. Um, but you can see the, the violations. Like, can I give you a code, uh, kind of a key to these, uh, code violations? Chapter ten, um, you'll see chapter, I think it's chapter six of the building code, building code violation. And usually chapter ten, I believe, is debris.
Do we know who owns that?
Uh, we do, we, we do know.
That property's not worth a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Exactly. Yeah. Yes, Charles, just to jump in here, these first two properties have already been on. Jay Asbury did a presentation on those to us and we have discussed those. I'm sorry, this was a deep hack that I didn't get that far to be able to even talk about it. Um, but I'm pretty sure that we've considered forty East Grand Rondo before.
We did.
Yeah, we.
Right, and also. Well, I mean, the bottom line is that this is what I wanted. I don't know how much Bobby is going to brief us, but last year. When Jay Asbury was still here. He, he identified, or we identified, I think code identified, as he looked at five properties and we directed him to. Determine, uh, to do a title search. We dedicated funds for the title search so that he could tell us whether it would be financially feasible to even go to foreclosure. And two of the ones on the list were that two thirty Central Avenue and this. Forty East Grand Rondo and I think forty East Grand Rondo had another property that backed up to it. If I remember correctly. It does, right, yeah, that's another one. So, uh, so some of these we've heard about, just to, just to let you know.
But no action was taken other than the title search?
Well, you don't even know if that happened. Um, no, the title, the title search happened and there were recommendations and the issue, and this is what's going to be part of my question, the issue is the cost. Because we have to every, we have a bunch of money and this is what I'm sure Bobby will tell us, we have to have. Money to fund the foreclosure process and I think no action was taken because A, um. We moved on to other things, but B, there was significant, there was significant costs just for foreclosure.
Okay, let's, let Charles go ahead and continue his presentation.
So this property actually has two fines running, um, on the property, a building code violation and, uh, chapter nine, which is, uh, junk vehicle.
Yes, she hit it.
Yeah, that.
No violations remain. This is, uh, right on South Summit Street.
This is a much nicer picture than it actually looks currently. I'm not sure where you pulled the picture.
Remains violation. This is from Google Maps.
Okay. Yeah. Google Maps.
This is Randall Street, actually two on Randall Street, remains in violation. This is one thousand Center Street and, and a building code violation. Remains in violation, seventy-three, seventy-three thousand dollars. And none, none of these are homesteaded. We removed all the homestead properties from presentation, so. These really were abandoned. This section didn't clear. This building's no longer there. It's an empty lot.
Yeah, we do it.
There are no violations.
Two tore it down, but they.
Uh, so they're either rental or they're vacant.
That's where that.
This is the other Randolph Street property. It's still no, no violations, but there is a sixty-seven thousand dollars. This one violation was corrected, had a building code violation as well as. Which brings up chapter ten.
Can you sound? Can you back up?
How far?
Uh, back to Cherry Lane.
Seven thirty-six.
It's a vacant lot now.
And is that?
Currently no violation.
Pam, that sixty-seven, is that part of the price that?
That's not in the main, eh?
It is. It's not on Cherry Street, about Cherry Lane.
And it, does that include, does that include the demolition that sixty-seven?
I believe so.
Yeah, I thought so.
Did they, is that house turned down?
That house has been removed, yes.
And this is the cost of demolition.
But the, still the property still has that lien on it.
Oh, okay.
So, without.
This is like a vacant lot, sixteen Ford Avenue. Um, remains in violation. Actually sent a letter to this, uh, this is a home company in Texas and a letter came back from Liverpool. Just asking what their plans were for a lot, if you like sell up. And there's some little tiny ones, uh, no violation, three oh nine North Summit Street, just lien is in place.
That one's still ongoing, Pam, that one?
No.
There's not anything on that now? I mean, there's not any violations now on that one?
I don't look for any violations, but there, I have no case on it.
Okay.
This one also, no violation, just has this, thirteen hundred dollars. Again, no violation. Back to twenty eighteen. That's the twenty eleven, currently no violation to the vacant lot. So this is tonight, just to bring this to your attention, we may, um, our attorney's going to light us on the process. We may find, uh. May we not decide to take the action, but when I started, this is one of the things that was kind of thrown at me. We have a lot. Uh, with a list of ongoing liens that we ought to address. We thinned out the homesteaded properties, which we can't, uh, do anything about, and this is what's left.
Mr. Pickens, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so, um, as Commissioner DeVito pointed out, that the, a foreclosure process can be a very, um, expensive process. Um, there's some law firms out there, um, that I'm dealing with now in the private practice, that it seems like they just string along. The foreclosure process and keep the tenant in there or the owner in there as long as they can. And then all that's going to do is rack up. Attorney, attorney bills for the city. I would say conservatively to foreclose on something, it'd be five to seven thousand dollars. And attorney's fees, um, to foreclose. Now these, the, the big ones, so ultimately what happens when you foreclose versus send a demand letter that has all of the U.S. Uh, the federal statute on the fair debt collection and all that stuff, the word debt collector. Once that goes out and times pass and they haven't paid, then you can go ahead and file the foreclosure. Um, and then at that point, they can always leave the property over and do a foreclosure, which happens sometimes. Um, and then the city would be the owner and then you have to take a step back and does the city really want to own this property and take it off the tax rolls? And all of the aspects that come into the city owning the property. Also, on some of those high up ones, if they don't meet the sale price. At the auction, then the city would become the owner of the property. So then once again, the city has it. A lot of these buildings are in disrepair, so I don't know if the city's ability to sell it. So then the city's sitting on, um, property. Also, some of these smaller ones, I would say, I mean. The really small is what ultimately could end up happening is if you foreclose on it and there's no other liens, then somebody could pick up the property for, for very cheap. Um, so you, you can run into that problem. Um, also, I think if you, if we foreclosed on something for a hundred and fifty dollars, then not, I, I would say even up to, in two thousands. I mean, the judge, judicial economy, it would just be a total waste of time to foreclose on something that's so small. Also, you have, that's why the title searches are necessary because you need to know if there's other liens on prop, on the property. Mortgages, stuff like that, to see where we would fall in line, to see if there even was a judicial foreclosure sale, if we would get any money or all the funds would be extinguished before. Um, we were able to get paid. Um, so there's a lot of stuff that goes into, um, the discussion. I did talk with Mr. Young. And if the city has a couple of properties that they want us to look at, we would like to sit down, um, and go through the process with Charles or Mr. Rudd, sorry. And, um, then we could come back and make a presentation as to what we thought it would cost the city and our opinion. If it would make sense for the city to foreclose on, um, some of these properties.
And I'd like to add that depending on location of property, the city can sell the property to the CRA. CRA can use it as redevelopment tools to get, uh, something going there. CRA has very different, uh, or more liberal rules by itself, property. The city has to do a notification and it's a complex process to sell a property, but, uh, not so for a CRA.
But, uh, this two thirty Central Avenue. Yeah, I, 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 I think the reason. Yeah, I, I, I think the reason Mr. Asbury didn't proceed with that, I think, because something of theirs is attached to it.
He's got several properties, Pam, you know how many properties he has attached to them? You released one of them, you released one of them that was out off Paradise, do you remember that, when the one out?
Yes, and we made three thousand dollars.
And you made three thousand dollars on that.
But.
When you recoup three, we recoup three thousand.
We got, we got three thousand, and so, had a big argument with Mayor Peterson about that, we got picked up. So now, for example, back to two thirty Central Avenue, I believe that property has a tenant upstairs.
It does.
It does. So what impact does that have?
It's not homesteading.
Well, I know, but I mean, what happened to the tenant, you know, would we become a landlord?
Yes. I mean, if it fore, but then, at that point, if we didn't have a lease, I mean, it could be, the city could evict or unlock the container type action, I mean, it would be forced to take a little hit.
All right, we don't even know what kind of condition the place is in either.
Well, exactly, I know, a lot of the violations there were unauthorized construction, construction.
Yeah. Pam, do you wanna speak to that one, to two thirty?
Yes, how many properties, Mr. Berbers, I think he owns at least four.
And how many of them have liens on them?
Have liens on them?
I mean, are they all, you put liens on all of his properties, correct? How many of them?
Holds clouds all the titles to all the properties.
Clouds all the titles, okay. How many of those, out of those four, how many in violation? Have violations on them as well?
None that I know of.
Okay.
I think there's only two in, in the city, ones on Lake Stella and then this one. Lake Stella property is not in violation.
So we need to have, I guess, like Mr. Pickens said, the opportunity to sit down with Charles and, and George, and to kind of go over what options we have. Yeah, well, we have to keep in mind, when we're doing this, is regardless of us abating these liens, we have hard costs. We do have hard costs, we have the cost of our code enforcement, we have the cost of our attorney that, you know, that is, that is doing the work with the code enforcement. You've got the mailing cost, the filing cost, so we do have costs, hard costs that are, that are attached to any of these li, any of these liens. And the city needs to, I think we're in a position, that the city needs to make sure that we secure those hard costs regardless, so.
But, it costs money to do that, and that's, that is always what holds us back. And I have another question for Bobby. So Bobby, is my, was my understanding from Jay Asbury, that in addition to other liens, that a complicating factor, and one thing he looked at in the title search, was multiple owners who could not be ascertained? Do I remember correctly that that would complicate the foreclosure process?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Because some, some of the properties have, were, are inheritance, or multiple generations of inheritance, and Mr. Asbury was telling us that it's very difficult sometimes to find who all the heirs are and where they keep up the cost. And am I remembering that right?
Yes.
Would you advertise them, then, do you advertise, and it's, I mean, how does that work as far as advertising?
You can do service by putting it in the newspaper, but if you don't serve the correct people, then laws, it can be dismissed, or if we don't serve enough people, it can be dismissed for failure to join a responsible party. So I think you would wanna ascertain the exact people that have the ownership in the property. And, I mean, that can take, you have to probate it down, to figure out who owns the property. Which I'm sure a lot of these properties are, are in that manner, because nothing's been done with them, I don't think the people would have went through the steps to get the ownership of the current, if they're not taking care of it.
So Mr. Asbury said there are a number of properties that have very difficult and complex ownership situations, just because of, like, probably better than probably.
So what we need to do tonight, we need to choose one or two, are we gonna tackle, or what?
I, I think we need to direct them, Mr. Rudd and Mr. Pickens, and Mr. Young, and then come back to us with a recommendation as to those that you feel that it would be, you know, worthwhile for us to expend that time, energy, and, and money into.
Yeah, and then, then the first thing, that's a bad question for me to ask, because he's a partner in firm, but I don't, do, we know where those title searches went that have already been performed? Because I mean, that, that's the first step to even having a commerce day, is to have, you, you're gonna need some type of paperwork.
We can, somewhere in the minutes.
Yeah.
There would be a record within the last two years.
Yeah.
That we authorized Mr. Asbury to do it, and at some point, he came back and gave a report of what he did a title search on.
And, and he'll, I think you can, yeah, Mr. Asbury, we, he'll, he could let us know where they are. I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're in his files, he has to maintain his files for a certain round of time, I think he's got a lot of school to do, so I'm sure they're in files. Okay, so do we wanna make a motion, does somebody wanna make a motion as far as what we're doing here?
What are we doing?
Well, we're directing, again, we're directing, Mr. Pickens.
I'll make a motion to direct Mr. Pickens to move forward and choose, or, I don't know, choose necessarily, what's the right word?
Recommend.
Yes, recommend which properties to move forward to foreclosing.
Awesome. Okay, we have a motion in a second, do we have any more discussion?
Just have a question. Wouldn't it be more progress to find out if five that Mr. Asbury already done paid for the search?
Well, I think that's part of what he.
I would, I would, yeah.
That's what he, that's what he's gonna do.
Okay, good, all right.
Okay. Three more questions, any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, motion carries. Bobby, you've got more work to do. Okay. Charles, do you want to?
Our closing force officer's gonna make a presentation next.
Okay, Pam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have two cases, separation. I don't know which one's on your agenda.
Five oh, five is first, I mean.
Take it to the Code Board on September twenty-eighth, the board recommended to reduce the fines to zero, and should assess the administrative costs at fifty-five, sixty-five.
Okay, so the court, so the Code Board reduced it down to fifty-five, sixty-five?
Just for the administrative costs.
And those are the administrative, those are the hard costs.
Did you, this is, the premise of this was a, it was a lien, the new property owner not aware of the lien?
He was not aware of the lien, he bought it with a quick claim date. And he's not aware that there was a lien on the property until he contacted me, and he made immediate steps to bring it into compliance as soon as he found out about the lien. So just a matter of days, or he had it maintained?
So basically, he didn't do a title search?
No, he did not.
He just bought it to property?
Yes.
Now, doesn't the law say that there's a lien on the property? That the buyer owes that lien?
Yes.
That lien goes with the property.
It goes with the property.
Yeah.
So, that's, wait just a second. Okay, Commissioner DeVito.
When I read both of these cases, I had a concern, and my thought was that, you know, maybe we need to table these and do a little research. We had some similar cases like this, a year or two ago, and we had a very long discussion where, and actually, we had a long discussion where we talked about, you know, fines being reduced to zero after a property changed hands, and the fact that the city was continually in a position of not being paid, and there were several cases where the code enforcement board had recommended reducing the fine to zero, and we actually imposed a fine of somewhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars. We imposed some, for us, very significant fines. So my concern is that we don't have that history, I think it's important that we be somewhat consistent. And this was just, I don't think it was twenty-twenty, I think it was twenty-nineteen.
It was.
But, right, but we had, we had a very long discussion, and it was a policy discussion, and actually, there was one property where we actually increased the fine, and, but anyway, we, we had a precedent that we set of requiring the properties pay something, and I don't recall exactly what it was, but it shouldn't be too far, hard to find. And Commissioner West, Commissioner Banks, do you remember that discussion?
I remember that discussion from the audience, right?
Yes. Okay, so my inclination would be to research what policy we kind of got started with in twenty-nineteen, and try to be somewhat consistent with that.
Pam, were you aware, I mean, you were part of that discussion, you should have been part of that discussion.
I was.
Do you recall?
I know, we call it being a policy.
Yeah.
It's a case-by-case basis.
I think it was.
We, I think they should be, by case-by-case basis, and not necessarily, you know, a set fee.
No, it wasn't a set fee, but we had a very long policy discussion. I don't know what our approach was gonna be.
The commission did increase the fines to a thousand dollars on a case that came before the commission, and that's up to your discretion. This is just a recommendation to the code enforcement board. You don't have to accept it, you can.
Which just came to us and said how much they wanted to continue, and did not want us to go to the magistrate. And that was part of the discussion is.
Well, I, I think we let everybody go.
Because we don't hold.
Our people accountable.
Accountable.
Oh, I think the apples got mixed with oranges there, I think there's plenty of benefits we had of Code Board.
I didn't say that, Commissioner DeVito, so I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we've got two examples of what we've been talking about right here.
Okay, so, to me, I think Code Board needs our guidance, I think, to me, I would, I would like to be more consistent with what we did the last time we considered these requests for reduction, but we do not have that in front of us.
We've had other reductions since then. We had three in June of this year.
Well, I'm not really, I'm not really debating that, I'm just saying.
I think, though, I think, I, I do believe that at some point, we do need to set some policy, we, we, the commission need to set some policy so that the code enforcement board has some guidelines to go by, that, that we're looking at. Because, do they have guidelines right now, Pam, or is it, okay? It's up to their discretion, and we really need to have some guidelines.
I, I, I think I agree with Pam, that it should be individually done, you know? Maybe it should be percentages, you know, not like go five hundred or a thousand dollars, maybe it's a percentage, that you don't wanna go below, or I'm not really sure, but tonight, we, we should try and clean this up, so we can move on. And the law really states that these people are, you know, everything that I look through, that they are responsible to pay these liens. So I think, you know, instead of copping out, like, what we're trying to do here, push your down, push your can down the road, which is what I kind of anticipated, because that seems to be what we do with, with, with these, is try and push the can down the road. I think we oughta buck up and, and, and let's, let's clear the slate on these. And then if we want another meeting or workshop to discuss some type of policy, that's fine, but the law really says that they pay the liens. Do we, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion, so we've got, well, we probably do have, before we have a motion, we do have property owners that would like to, that might be here, do we have the owner from five? I know, but you're not up right now?
No, please, Mr. Henry, excuse me, Mr. Henry, Henry is not here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Henry is not here.
He was aware of the meeting tonight, I didn't have cell service on my phone any of the last two days, but I think it happened Monday.
Okay. And so he was aware that we were having the meeting tonight? So commissioners, with this first one on five oh five, and I think we should take them individually. Five oh five Orange Avenue, it's a vacant lot, it's a vacant lot. We're gonna need a motion. And this is, he agreed to pay the administrative fines, is that correct?
He did.
Okay. And he contacted you, how, when, how did he find out that there were fines on this property?
He called me, I don't know if he researched it himself, but he called me and verified that there wasn't another property. And I told him it was, he, he had maintained within a few days. You're moving.
Okay. Okay, commissioners.
He took ownership on August eleventh, and he had it maintained by September thirteenth.
Of this year, okay.
Yes.
So how, how did this? I don't have anything in my folder on five oh five. Okay, then it's design services. Okay, so my question about five oh five is five oh five Orange, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so how did the gentleman acquire this property?
Quick claim, do a quick claim.
Oh, I know, I know a lot, thank you, though. So he got it by a quick claim date, so he didn't do a title search.
Correct.
So what is the, I really, I don't have anything, what is, what was the fine on this one?
Seven thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay, and we don't know what, we don't know what consideration he gave.
He asked to have it reduced to a hundred and fifty dollars, and then the board agreed to bring him down to fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay, which is just the administrative cost, okay, in the past, when we've looked at these, I think we've had the information from Pam, what someone paid, what the property is worth, and so what the, you know, what the ratio of lien amount is to what the property is worth, and the owner, the current owner pays for it. Because when they take it by, by a quick claim, obviously, you know, if they said there was a lien, that is to do the title search, but what we don't know is how much the deal are we giving them? Do, do we have any idea how much five oh five Orange is worth?
It's our tiny lot.
Yeah, the.
Our value's ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars, ten thousand seventy dollars.
And has he kept it in compliance since he had it? Has he kept it in compliance since he purchased it?
Yes.
It's grown not this high already again.
I looked at it today.
I looked at it today too, but there, those, whatever those weedy trees are, they're this high again, in the back part of it already. Back part doesn't look too bad, but it does seem to spark like crazy.
I don't believe the quick claim deed states how much he paid for it.
It doesn't.
So the market value is ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, and he has seven thousand.
Lien of seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Although my percentage is, and if you, fifty percent of that is thirty, sixty, seventy, fifty, okay, cut it in half. I'm not sure, you know, I.
If you wanna do that, then we need a motion that we.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get some direction from people that have been up here and done some of this stuff before, I've never. Okay, I guess my inclination, my inclination would be to reduce it to a thousand. Because I want them to know that we are serious about the property being cared for, that would be my inclination. I mean, it's not half the value of the property, but it's a significant amount. Well, I'm just gonna go with twenty-five percent of the loan, which is eighteen hundred forty-three seventy-five.
Okay, well, somebody needs to make a motion, so which, which one of you wants to make a motion? With the caveat that he has to pay that, what, within thirty days, or it reverts back?
Whatever you decide.
Whatever we decide. Whatever we decide, okay, even thirty days or sixty days or?
Well, whatever motion we make today, we need to try to put down something that, uh, not just picking and choosing, but a, a standard rate, sorry, percentage or however we're gonna do it around. Yeah, that, that'll be the only fair way to be able to do it. But we do not want to worry to get out, recharge somebody fifty-five dollars, then charge nobody nothing.
That, that works already out.
That's what already happened with the code.
Yes, okay.
So I will make a motion that we reduce the fine to a thousand dollars plus the fifty-five, ten administrative cost to be paid within forty-five days.
Okay.
It's fifty-five, sixty-five.
Well, whatever the administrative cost is.
We have, we have a motion to reduce it down to a thousand dollars, which is not the percentage that you've been discussing. But we do have a motion to reduce it down to a thousand dollars, do we have a, plus the administrative cost, do we have a second?
And the administrative cost is?
Fifty-five, sixty-five.
Fifty-five, sixty-five?
Actually, the administrative costs are a hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents, as best that Pam could estimate, but the board agreed to the fifty-five, sixty-five.
Fifty-five, sixty-five.
Okay, so.
So that's the whole amount, forty. So it would be eleven hundred twenty-two.
Dollars and ninety-two cents. Okay. So Commissioner DeVito, do you want to, you'll accept that as part of the administrative cost? Okay, so we have a motion.
I'm saying.
We have a second, okay? We have any more discussion regarding this one?
It's not fifty-five, sixty-five, what?
No, it's one twenty-two ninety-two.
Whatever it was, Commissioner Burden said, that's fine.
And, and I asked Pam to go in and I asked her to do a breakdown and she did that on code enforcement, how much it was to do the mailing, how much it was to report the lien, um, all of those, those are hard costs. So that's where we are, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Okay. Yeah, done.
Thank you.
Pam, did you need us to do anything as far as the timeframe?
Forty-five days from today.
Okay.
I'm gonna need a little. My calendar.
Okay.
I gave her forty-five days to a reason.
Okay.
So, but do your best. I said, do your best.
Okay. So then our next one is gonna be two hundred Chestnut Street. And do know that we have, um, the owner of that property is here to speak. Pam, do you want to go ahead and, and present this one?
I'll go ahead. This is two hundred Chestnut Street. This was January twenty-third, two thousand and seven, the property maintenance, fines, fifty-five dollars a day, the trip to five thousand and fifty dollars, that's not administrative cost, one day is a lot of clients. Fine reduction, this is the range twentieth of twenty twenty, and the case was heard at the code board September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Code board's recommendation was to reduce the fine to zero. Um, my last inspection was September fourteenth. I didn't drive by and look at it today, but it is in compliance, it has been, far by now.
This is the house with all the toys in front?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners? We have a motion? Oh wait, I'm so sorry, Mr. Miller, would you like to speak?
Yes, coming.
Okay, absolutely.
I'm unsure what you have in front of you. Does it give you the background and the history on this?
It has everything that was in the package.
Okay, then I won't rehash that. Uh, I'll simply say that I was trying to clean up some property adjacent to property I own. Property and, and I saw for decades. Became available, bought it, jumped at the opportunity. Condition was that all the junk be cleared away prior to my closing. I'll add that I subsequently bought three other derelict adjacent properties and improved and returned those to productive use. So I, I like to think that wasn't part of the problem, it was part of the solution. And what happened, this goes back almost fifteen years. And what happened is just normal file maintenance back in twenty twenty, the, uh, code link popped up, all shot. And as I looked into it, Pam provided some information. I saw that the city had filed the, uh, co-vocation against Robert Newbold, who was not the owner of the property at the time that the violation was filed. He had actually needed that property over several years prior to John Newbold, his trustee of the Robert Newbold Trust. I just mentioned that because I don't know if that's a legal complication in terms of enforceability. John apparently communicated very closely with the city to let them know that it's being cleaned up. And to Mr. Robert Scher. And the day that I closed, he cleaned all his junk up, and I still had to go in and improve property. He spent that fifty, sixty thousand dollars improving that property. So I was never aware of it, and meanwhile, this is just continuing to click, it's continuing to click. And I think when I first spoke to Pam in twenty twenty, it had run like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So what I'm, what I'm asking is, in the interest of fairness, that we reduce to zero, I suspect this was a simple clear quarter, it was never cleared up. I'll tell you that the person who handled the closing for the Robert Newbold Trust, uh, John Newbold, the trustee, was the then city attorney. Certainly, he should have known about this. Apparently, when he did the title work, he did not run a municipal liens check. And I realize what the law says, that technically I'm on the hook. But again, I just ask if you recognize that I was trying to do something good for the community, certainly it benefited me because I was thinking of property adjacent to that which I already own. But I'm kind of an innocent party. Oh, in that vein, if I could mention one other thing, I met with a gentleman who owned the property that was first, uh, discussed, and he's from St. August. He bought the property, he got a quick claim deed, he paid, I don't know how much of back taxes, and he had every intention of coming to Crest City and building a home there. So that would seem to be the kind of activity you want to encourage. And he was, despite what the law says technically, he was kind of an innocent party. And I heard Pam say that when he came there, he was all over it and took care of it immediately. Again, the kind of behavior we would wanna encourage as a city, I guess, rather than penalize. So I'm just gonna mention that in the same vein, because I think on a case by case basis, there was no willful violation, you're an innocent party in both cases. So if you have any other questions?
What is your name, please?
Danny Miller.
Danny.
I got it. Don't let the gray hair fool you.
I'm so sorry, Danny.
It happens to me every time I go to a class reunion.
Same thing here. You're supposed to say, you just can't remember which brother.
I remember when he was this little and had that dark, pretty hair and eyes.
Oh, you're right.
Um, okay, I have a question, who actually did your title search when you bought that property? Was it Gullett Title or was it?
I think Jay worked through God. I'll also mention that, uh, Jay handled the initial transaction between Robert Newbold to John Newbold, as trustee of, of the trust, so, you know, the notice of violation was against the wrong party, maybe that's why it didn't turn up, I don't know.
I have a silly question, when you do the title search, the title company has insurance?
Yeah.
The title company is insurance.
It is insurance, yeah. So that if they make a mistake, it's covered?
Yeah, they'll go back, um, I would guess, perhaps you should speak to this, I'm gonna go back to the attorney.
But you know, uh, when you just been, been in Crest City and riding around that island, cause it always gets so neat. And when all that was there, I didn't, I, I don't know who moved it, but it was terrible, you were right.
You must, I just wanted to get it going.
And the island had, I remember when the island was perfect, clean, all of it around there. Then all of a sudden, ready, the entrance, where the exit of it. Old road scrapers and, and all kind of vehicles, uh, lined up there. So, but I, I would just say that a day, I just would ride, and the property really looked nice, I, I don't know who.
We just, we just moved it, that's a never ending.
Yeah.
Task, never ending.
Commissioner DeVito, so. Hi, Dan.
Hi, hi, I know you're. Cause I meant recently, okay. So my question is, and this is the analysis that we've done.
That's okay.
This is the analysis that we've done, we'll start these in the past, we like to know what is.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, Commissioner DeVito, we're having a hard, it's okay, it's okay. Thank you, we're just having a hard time here.
So the analysis that we've done for the property in the past are, what is the approximate worth of your property? What is the value of it? And what are your intentions for this particular property, is it rented right now?
It is rented, yes.
Okay, and do you plan to continue renting it or?
For the foreseeable future, yes.
Okay.
One, one day, uh, it will be sold as part of an entire package.
Sure, so.
And redeveloped presumably.
Right, so at this point, um, but since we don't have that research in front of us, or we do, I'm sorry, I think I got like double your property or triple it, like none of the one on Orange Avenue with my packet. What is the approximate taxable value or the market value of your property?
Taxable value, I don't recall, Pam, I don't know taxes. Uh, probably two hundred and four. Which is what I paid for.
Okay, so my question to you, and the, I mean, you're doing a great job with it, it looks very nice. But in the interest of fairness, uh, would you be willing to, um, compromise and pay a thousand dollars to thirdly?
On principle, no.
No, not on principle.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be offensive, I mean, it's an honest answer.
Sure.
I'm trying, I think, and being part of the solution and not part of the crime.
And we understand that.
We understand that, but you, you know, you did do a title search, um, so, and you owed the money, the lien, okay, you bought a property, only comes with it. Um, you might be lucky, because if the title company did not do the correct title search for you, you probably can go back and get your money back from title company. That's my guess. Um, I don't know exactly, is that, is that correct, could that happen?
Gullett, that's a question for Mr. Gullett. Mr. Gullett.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, yeah, you would have a cause of action.
Yeah, if there's not an exception, it will be to the, the title company will pay it. And I can tell you from a claims working standpoint, it worked in that, paying a thousand dollars to, to cure a code lien, it was probably done yesterday. Um, I'm asking, I'm asking Krista, if, if we did that one, she doesn't.
She has a letter, there's a letter.
There's a letter in there that's attached, and that's why.
I don't know why her letter, it was a letter from.
Yeah, she, she. Or on a possible resale, that what?
Yeah, it was a possible resale, so we just wanted to make like always check title first before you enter a contract.
Yes, I think that's what.
And that's what came up.
I, it looks like just the deed was done by guaranteed title, so I would assume that it's guaranteed title.
Yeah.
If they did the deed.
When you purchased it, it was?
I don't recall that the title company was, it's whatever, it's whatever Jay Asbury used.
Okay.
See, because the seller, if you don't handle that.
Yep, so if, if a code violation exists when a property is sold, that does not, that's not, that is not a lien effectually, the number one sixty-two. So it would not attach to the property as a lien if a certified copy of the code lien was recorded. If it's just a violation, it will not attach, but a certified copy of the lien is recorded, it will attach, cross-attach. It, and.
We, we have a certified copy of the lien, of the lien that was filed.
Yeah, so if it was recorded, that, and if it's not an exception on schedule B two, as Mr. Miller was saying, it will be governed by the title.
Can I pose a question? If the notice of violation is sent to the, list the wrong party, not the owner, isn't that a bit of complication?
My opinion, notice would have failed under a notice of violation if the owner was not.
It's under Robert Newbold.
But it says the Robert Avenue Bowl Irreparable, Unreparable Bowl Trust.
That's not Robert.
So if you pull up a Robert.
Well, we'll get into that whole discussion on murder of title law.
Okay, I'm, I'm, this is what, okay, okay, this is what I think we need to do. Um, we may table this one?
Yes.
Bobby, let's do, um, if we, I'm gonna, y'all have to make a motion, but I'm gonna recommend, Bobby, you find out if in fact we did, we filed this correctly. And then we have to be fair and equitable here, we discharged this first gentleman, you know? And he came forward the way he did, and we, we just have to be fair, and I wanna make sure that whatever decision we make right now, that we are.
But this one is such a mess. This is really a mess.
And I, I would move that we table this mess and direct Mr. Pickens to let us know whether, um, the city contributed by making that error, by making any error. I would, I would like more information before we decide anything, so that's my motion.
Do we also wanna see it? Title company might be responsible?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to table this.
And ask Mr. Pickens to extract the pertinent information.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
That made me feel that, okay, I do believe that, I do believe that, we need to make sure that if we've done something, that, then we need to.
And Danny, I apologize.
Oh, no.
I'm so embarrassed.
Nothing worrying, nothing worrying, okay.
Her eyesight.
Hopefully all the time.
Hopefully, no, really, hopefully.
Your voice.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be interested in.
Yeah.
And your name's all over this, I'm going. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, anyways, Danny, thanks for your presentation.
Right.
And Mr. Gullett, thank you so much for hanging around and helping us out with that.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay.
Next item is a design services for City Hall renovation phases. Bringing this back to the copy of the design, um, the redesign package, that's for the entire building. And we recommended, uh, setting four phases. You see that phase one would be the finance department, which is sort of why I started this. Uh, it would include the, the men's room, kind of hall here being converted to a family or a unisex restroom, which will enable us to use a restroom while the other ones were to renovate in phase two. Unfortunately, his, his estimate of construction of phase one was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we have forty thousand dollars in better place for this. So I gave some options of, of either putting it off for a year, doing some minor. So we have forty thousand dollars in better place for this, so, uh, I gave some options of of either putting it off for a year, doing some minor, um, just remodeling. Or using more better place, and then since then, I thought about another option of, um, we have one need of, uh, both our new CRA position and our code enforcement. Right now, our code enforcement is in the hall behind you, provide her with an office. Uh, so I'd like to see us renovate those front offices, which would mean moving a wall to equal out the space there and closing in doors, we have two offices there. And fixing the bathrooms, the bathrooms over there are really atrocious, uh, so actually creating one unisex bathroom. And just some sprucing cleaning up the building, so that in the future, we could, uh, house our finance staff over there while we would, um, with the remodel their part, perhaps in the next fiscal year. Uh, I think the forty thousand dollars would, would cover, um. Getting the other building ready to receive the two offices we need, as well as, um, making it livable, clean and get rid of the moldy carpet and so forth, getting a bathroom usable. Um, for the interim as well, if we can possibly do some remodel of the finance offices, I don't know what we could do, I don't have much left, but. And also, uh, we could get a price, I could bring you a price on the men's room turning into a unisex, we would remove the urinal, create a handicap accessible stall. One stall, uh, one sink, we'd put a baby changing table in there, replace one of the sinks. I think it's, it's doable, cause there'd be no plumbing to move, it would just be, um, you know, new tile, new surfaces, new plumbing fixtures, and it'd be a modern, nice bathroom. You all, banks drive it in there, but it's the, the, the paper's peeling off the wall, and it's, it's just, it's not a good place, and that's where we send our guests to use the restroom to complete these meetings. So it'll become a nice bathroom, um, and I think we could do that at the forty thousand dollars, and then next budget cycle, we'll talk about what we might wanna do in the following year with better place funds.
So. Commissioners.
I think it's a great idea. I just have one very quick question about diagram. So, Charles, your, what you're proposing to us is in this second large paragraph on your memo. Actually, third full paragraph, but it's, what you're describing is what's in that second large paragraph, correct?
Yes.
And you're, you're talking about, um. Doing something with the old annex building and then the finance department and a conference table space. So when you say a conference table space, are you talking about when you go to the diagram here? Um, are you saying that we would create, um. I guess in the bottom left corner, the, that you would do that whole realignment of the three offices?
Well, I don't think we could afford that.
Can't afford that right now.
With the forty thousand.
Right.
Uh, but that, that would hopefully be what we do next, the next year.
Okay, so you're talking about something less than that.
Yes, I would, you know, clean this out, once we're able to move the code enforcement desk out of there, and perhaps get a conference table. Right now, we, we need in these folding tables, and it's.
Right. Okay, so what you're saying is you wouldn't be moving any walls back here?
Correct.
Okay, you would, and part of the expenditure would be the actual conference table.
Potentially, unless that's prohibited, cost prohibitive, so. I might just get a better fold.
Yeah, I remember too, you've got, if we do something to the building next door, you do have a conference area over there.
That's, that's true.
That you could, you know, that you could, that you could use. I know it's not that convenient back and forth, but you still have that conference for right now.
Okay.
Take that table out of there.
Or take that table out of there.
Table over here, I think.
And move it over here, cause there is a conference table over there, so.
Good size one, yeah.
I would move that we authorize, uh, Charles to go forward with his, um, modified proposal. For the forty thousand dollars budget.
Yes, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. A motion and a second. Any more discussion? I'm seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
All aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, Charles, motion carries forward.
The next item is to rank the RFQ responses. Unlike the RFP, we don't have to eliminate any of these firms, we just need to rank them or negotiation. My recommendation is Zep Cohen, they were the only firm that really provided us with experience being the planning department for a small city. They're, they currently are the planning department for several small cities. Uh, did reach out to several of their, um, references, gave them glowing reports, they've been fabulous to work with. And then we would, we'd have all three firms on, sort of on a contractual basis, so, uh, Zep Cohen was too busy to do, for instance, uh, we wanted to allow development view. Our, our code, we can, um, talk to CHW or Ayers, uh, we'd have them all available for continuing services. So my recommendation is to move forward, I'll bring you back an agreement, Zep Cohen, for ongoing, um, planning services, it'll likely be an hourly fee. They may propose a couple of options. I'll bring those to you for approval in November.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Yeah.
And do we have a second?
Sure.
Do we have any discussion? Discussion? Motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
All aye.
All opposed, no.
I have it. Motion carries.
Next item is, uh, appointments to planning and zoning board. We have two positions which have expired in September. And are willing to be reappointed, the terms are three years. We also have a vacancy which needs to be filled.
And those were the ones that we just appointed for the six months.
There were six months.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure that they know.
There, I have a question.
Yes.
I have, there are some, we have.
Really need to, really before we go forward in that discussion, we really should have a motion.
So, I mean, I'm asking about something different. We have another item on the agenda, which some people are here for, correct? Don't, don't we have the property issue on?
The public hearing.
Yeah, that's our, that's our public hearing, that's the very.
Okay.
That's the last one.
Yeah, I know it's the last one. This is a really long agenda, and I have been meaning to jump in and say, is there a reason why we cannot deal with these people issue? And.
Well, we've been asked, I mean, everybody, a lot of people have been waiting as we've been going along, so we're almost there. I mean, we're like, just one, one, one vote away.
This is the last.
One vote away, so.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay, so right now, he's making the recommendation that we. Give.
Reappoint the two, uh, six month positions that expired, and to appoint someone to the vacancy.
I, I think, right, I, I don't know that we're ready to appoint someone to the vacancy, and I also think that, you've heard from the other, the other two members. There were other, there were two other members that had been serving for some time.
I heard from Mr. Carmichael, indicated, I, I'd asked when they were originally employed, said two thousand nine, and, uh, did not hear back from Ms. Glover.
Okay, so I think that needs some further discussion before we.
So at very least, I recommend you reappoint the two, and then come back next month with some.
Okay, Commissioner, so right now, we could have a motion for that, and then we can open up the discussion.
I see.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Okay, do we wanna have some discussion? Does anybody have any comments?
Um, well, my comment is just, um. We really have not had much preparation for this. It's very serious. Uh, I know we did the two appointments for the first six months. My motion would be to, that we just extend the original appointments, um, and. By whatever many months we needed, and bring this back when we have more information. Uh, cause we need to do research on the term for, I guess, Mr. Carmichael, and then find out whether Ms. Glover's seat is gonna be open or whether it needs a new term. Um, and then for whatever terms are open, I, I think Crescent City needs to come into the modern era and do some kind of public notice and advertising for these open seats. Uh, they're appointed by the mayor. Um, but anyway, and we didn't advertise for the other two, but, I mean, I know their, Mr. Runberry obviously is willing to serve, cause he's been here for a long time. But anyway.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're doing right now, is we're gonna go ahead and make these two, that's what he's asking us, to make these two appointments for the full term, three years.
All right.
And then we've got the three other positions.
Okay.
That we need to look at and and discuss and figure out what they want to do, but right now, I know that these two members have shown their interest in continuing.
I believe Ted Carmichael showed interest as well to stay with us. Right. So we're grouping in Ted, Tracy, and Kim.
No.
But, well, I think there's an issue with Ted, because we need to determine how long his term would be, is that what you're saying? We don't want them to all.
We want the bill expired.
Yeah, they can't all expire at the same time, so that's why I think right now, this is the two. This is the two, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at those other three at a bet. And we can look at them next month.
When we appoint that fifth person, we could.
Yes.
We could say that, that's, that, that's a two-year appointment, and that would throw one off at least, and then.
You have to have staggered terms.
One more year.
We have a staggered term, so I, I think for that, did we have a motion? We have a motion. We have a motion.
Okay, yeah, so I think for the two, no, fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, Mr. Runberry, thank you. Thank you for your service. You've got it for three more years. Whether you want it, whether, whether you want it or not, we appreciate you sitting through this, um, you know, that's, that's a tough one, okay. So then, at this time, I'm gonna open up for a public hearing. And Bobby, do you want to go ahead and read this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Crescent City, Florida, closing and vacating Sella Street. In the City of Crescent City, providing for changing of the official town map, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for a severability clause, providing effective.
Mr. Banks, I need to pay attention to me a minute, please, cause you were part of this. We've done this before, and the last one we did, we agreed we would not do this anymore. The, the, do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember that.
We agreed we would not give, then that was, I think, the last one, we would not give it away.
But I, I have concerns. I have a lot of.
Wait, okay, 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 let's, let's do this in order now. Okay, so.
Yes.
That's your understanding, Commissioner Banks, that you're understanding.
Commissioner, that, um.
Okay, remember that, as well, remember that we've got a change in the guard, so this is important, that we have, you know, this, this history. Okay, Commissioner DeVito, you have a concern?
Well, I have a concern, because I have read this, and number one, I'm not sure how this whole scenario came about. There's one property that, um, has an infringement from another property. Which was, as I understand it, we, uh, recently purchased, and I'm not understanding at all why it is before us in this posture. I don't understand why it is the city's responsibility to solve the problem by vacating a city-owned property. I, I just don't understand this at all.
Okay.
And, uh.
Okay, so Commissioner Burton, you have a question?
Well, I, I have a question, but I agree with, uh, Commissioner DeVito. Uh, basically, you have a home that's been there since nineteen seventy-two. It's a wood-framed house. Um, if you go down and take a look, the wood-framed house, and you take a look at where the public water comes into the, uh, that property, okay, that from, uh, you know, it comes. It's not where it's safe, it's, it's, this state actually encompasses that particular water, even that's there. Um, there, there just seems to be, I have a problem, to me, I'm not gonna call it squatting, but this person's been there since nineteen seventy-two. And all of a sudden, we realize that, gee, he's on another person's property. And if you look at tree lines, I know, um, you know, it might be kind of odd, but most generally, uh, when you have a pasture, this is, I'm talking, this is my experience. If, if you had pastures and we're looking at land and eye-hauling where lines won't be, a lot of times it's the tree lines. And the tree lines really are very straight. I mean, it's very straight tree line that kind of indicates where the boundaries are. And unfortunately, not where he has this all staked out, so I'm not sure who did the survey, and I'm not sure how far back things have to go. But, but I think we need more people in the room. I, I think we need a person that owns the White House in there talking. I think we need the person that is in approach with the sheds in there talking. We, we need these people here, and so I don't think.
Okay, okay, we've got, okay.
I don't think, I think it doesn't belong here with the commission trying to decide this.
Yeah, it'd be appropriate for us to present the case.
Yes, I think, I think that's what I'm gonna go to, cause I believe it's Mr. Doctor Deputy, correct? I wanna make sure I get that correct. Doctor Deputy? Okay, so who wants to? Charles, do you want to, or do you want Doctor Deputy?
History, kind of how it came to be. It's come before you, because it came to planning its own board, and they've made recommendations for approval, so that's why it's before each day.
Okay.
And I'll let, um, Dr. Deputy give the, sort of the background and his request.
Yeah, I have, uh, two lots, and that, that house that's in the middle, the little one, the wood-framed house you're talking about. Now, the original owners don't live there, so it's not like, you know, it's been something, it's been there forever. The property, I bought one property a couple of years ago, and I bought the other one recently.
Can you show us which one you bought a couple of years ago?
The map.
You want?
The map.
Show it.
Okay, um. The, the one that's, uh.
Block X.
Yeah, block X is one I bought earlier, and then the one in the square is what I bought. Recently.
Recently, okay.
And you can see the house is, you know, five, I think it's five feet, three inches. Onto the, uh, onto the, uh, my property, the property that I bought. And what I'm trying to do is, if we close the road, I can move mine over, and then they can have, in other words, I don't have to require them to try to move their house.
Why do you want that property? That is what I'm asking. Okay, the house is over the line here, but he wants this half of this.
Do you wanna get up? Can somebody get up and, and, and?
Just.
Point.
Essentially wants more, the, the house being over the line, my understanding is it approaches, reduces the buildable space.
Right.
Because of our setback requirements.
Right.
So, the idea is that to vacate the, there's actually not a road there, it's just a.
It's property there.
Just property, it, to, to allow more buildable space along, that's the, the reason.
The commission agreed many years ago not to give it away, so that's gonna be the problem right now.
And we do have, there is an issue there, because we have to have, my understanding, a fifteen-foot drainage man, is that correct, regardless? Is that what?
Well, so I think some discussions happened before I came on, obviously before Mr. Rudd came on, and I guess when this was brought up, uh, well, first, I need to say, um. That, obviously, I know that I work for the firm Holmes and Young, and Holmes and Young has represented Mr. Deputy before, I personally have not, and that we have not represented upon this issue. Just so that's out there. Um, there was, I guess, talks of if the city was an agreeance to, um, vacate the right-of-way. And give him half of it, and half of it would go to the other property owner on the other side, but he would grant a fifteen-foot easement to the city if we ever had to have storm.
On the western edge over here.
Stormwater.
Stormwater drainage or anything like that. Now, we were just made aware of that after I drafted the ordinance, after everything, so all that's come about afterwards, just knowledge that we didn't have. So that's really.
So I think that's in there, but, okay, I am not sure why this is before us, to me. Uh, I think it's more appropriate for a private property owner to pursue private options. I, I completely don't understand how this is the city's problem to solve. And, um, it may be a recommendation from the planning and zoning board, frankly, I would like to see the minutes from the planning and zoning, uh, board on how this happened. Um, this is a very, this is a very heavy agenda we have here tonight, and I think that this is way too much, um, for us to consider this evening.
Yeah.
May I just say one thing? Kim is here. Can you come up and tell us what happened at that meeting?
And I'm gonna.
That, I, I'm not.
Okay, but I'm gonna. Okay, but I'm gonna, I'm, I wanna say this, though. I, I know the meeting's running late.
Yeah.
But we're here to do the people's work, and I don't care how long it takes. If we have to be here till midnight, we're gonna be here till midnight, because we're here to do the people's work. And so, it's gonna take time, all of these issues, and all we do is push it down, and it's gonna, it's gonna add to another meeting, so I'm here, we're gonna get this done.
Okay, Mayor, if I could, please respond.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, some of these issues that we have had would not take so long if they would be more crystallized when they are brought to us. I think that's something that we need to work toward, and my object is not to just, quote, push it down the road, but to get the correct information before us. I think.
And that's fine, we're working with a new staff, and when they're all, when everybody's trying.
I know that, but what I am trying to say tonight is, we still have other business that we haven't gotten to.
Well, right now, we're on this business stuff.
Yeah.
I know, we're wasting time, Governor.
And this is, and this is the end of our agenda, except for the city manager's report.
If I could thought that we could get the answers that we need and make a good decision.
Okay.
I would think it was right.
Commissioner DeVito?
Mayor, this, this came before you because it was a request made to the city, so the process was it would go to the Planning and zoning. And then they would make a recommendation to the commission, so here we are. So it's not us trying to go out there and solve someone's problem. Request was made to the city to consider, for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Roddenberry, did he want to speak? Did you? As far as from.
He had to answer any questions. I was at the meeting.
Would you come to the podium, please?
Kim Roddenberry, two two nine South Prospect Street, I'm a member of the zoning planning commission.
I think it was on the side.
No problem. But, but, you know, we're saying that you brought this to us, um, that this is what you guys decided, is that correct? Uh, that was the request, uh, by the doctor to, um, again, have, uh, have this roadway, if you will, separated from the city and added to his property. We saw no reason why not. Uh, no one ever approached us and said that, you know, Mr. Banks and Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Wes had mentioned this earlier. That, that was never mentioned in the meeting. Okay, so I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was clear, that, yeah, this is what you guys agreed on. Yes. This is where I was trying to came from. Yeah, it was a unanimous decision.
That's all I need to know.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Nice, thank you. So I think what's happened at this time is that, of course, we have new staff, and they're not aware of the history of.
Of that, right.
Of the, and so that's why they did not advise the Planning and zoning Board accordingly, because we also.
We started most of those.
Yeah. Block X is this one too. And so, um, I believe on this one, this is.
Right.
The ones that.
This is.
I know what that is.
You know. Over here. This is their shed, this is the residence, yeah, their house is partway over.
Yes, right.
All right.
Right.
So, you know, and I hope that you, I don't know, this responsibility is in the past to make sure that house is aligned.
Right.
Building, zoning, or whatever.
His patents just kept, you know, how.
I see, any other thing I can do, and I'm just trying to be honest.
Okay, let's.
The easement, for them, you know, if I don't do that, then I either have to get them to sell, or they could buy me down, which, this came up for sale, and they wanted to buy it. Uh, they're just, you know, I think the granddaughters stay in there, it's working, but, um. If I move it over, then I don't have, I don't have to make them move their house, or do their sale, or whatever. I'm just trying to be nice. And, you know, it's costing me money to spend all this time and surveys and stuff we're doing.
Okay, and we have the other homeowners here? Yes, on the other side, okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask that they can just get up, and if they want to speak, they've been, they've been here since, I think, even here since five fifteen, afternoon. Bless your hearts.
It's okay, we understand. Um. Yes, and Larry Simpson.
And your address.
Nine point four B.
With the little white house.
Okay.
Um. We realize it's a mess. We don't know anything about the discussion portion. Um. We did purchase our property without having a survey, because we closed on April first. We couldn't get a survey in time. I mean, we couldn't get any money for, I don't know how long it was gonna be. And when they finally came out, you know, they did the survey, we had been told that there may be an issue with. Our shed or somewhere around in there might be sitting on the paper street. I'm sorry, I need some water.
Here, I got, here's one.
Thank you.
I got, I'm right here.
I got, I got.
So. So it's my understanding, this is a paper street that has not been maintained by anybody but the, the joint owner. I think our water meter is on this property. Or, um, it's on Debbie's.
Let me change the line.
Would you come up here and show me, show me on this right here? This is Red Street.
Our water meter, and, and it took me.
Are you?
A while.
Is this your house over here? Where me and Duddy.
Show us on the wall.
That's my house.
That was Vicky Canetto's house that was moved from here to there.
Can you show us on the wall?
On the wall.
Yeah.
The house.
Right, go back down, under there.
That's the shed.
See the square right there, there? The house square?
It's wrong.
Down below. But, you know.
Down below, right there.
That's our house.
Right.
It's been there since the house was moved in. I don't know the exact year, I know the house was built originally in nineteen thirty.
It was in the fifties.
All right, listen, I'll, I'll give you the history on that house. Thank you. Over here and block. This block over here. That belonged to Vicky Canetto.
That is a block house here now.
Right. And she moved it here and built that block house. That's what we were told.
Yeah.
Yes. It's seventy-fourish. And seventy-fourish, right, right. And, I don't know. And it's moved into the block house and didn't do well at that. And, and so.
May I give you, what way is the water line running? Is it running for Reed Street? You almost got it. The water line comes. We should have. Comes down Reed Street, and my water meter is right there.
See any other water, water meter?
And this lot's water meter is.
No, it's not there.
Over here.
It's on this other end, stick.
This lot water meter is right there. This lot water meter is right there.
And I've, I've, I've seen your house twice. And I waved at you, but I don't come up to the house, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna alarm as much as I come up to the back door, I'm gonna like.
How many people are in your house?
Mine's sitting in a little corner, cat corner, and.
Yeah.
My house.
Yeah, it was just walk up there, that's fine.
That little shade is here. Not up there.
That's probably gonna have to be managed by harness. Well, if, 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 we were ever to work this out.
There's a lot of big oak trees.
Yeah.
They come right down this line.
Right. Oh, yeah. If we were to ever work this out with the commission, with the city. Um, then we, between us and Mr. Deputy, we were going to work out the other issues of where our shed is sitting, you know, versus. Who, who owned that part of that property, then that would be a second name that we would work out as own. But the property has, I'm not saying, let's see what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna say. I'm saying that it's a paper street, it's never been maintained. We, we understand.
When I first asked about it.
Agreement not to get rid of it any, excuse me, years ago. And that's our last one, and it's the only one on that side of Lake Sella that we have interest to public. Um, have y'all, have y'all closed any other streets?
I mean.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we've closed. You don't wanna have much interest to it unless you're gonna cut down a bunch of oak trees.
That can be done, that can be done. I just, I'm gonna object, object to that, because we agreed years ago not to do that. That could be. A public area to probably get off here just to fish or whatever.
With no parking, and there's.
I know, Mr. Deputy.
I mean, there's no, there's no way anybody can use it.
Yes, we can.
Not, not, I mean, where are they gonna park, and who's gonna maintain it?
Okay. We've got, we got off in the weeds with the presentation, everybody, and, and it's true, we don't have a motion. And so.
We don't have a motion, and I'm not willing to make a motion at this time.
Okay. So, commissioners?
Well, we, we, we need to answer, do something tonight.
Well, if we don't have a motion, if we don't have a motion, and we.
Tonight, I think it'd be a good idea to talk. I think it's over.
Okay, then I think what, then, then I need a motion to table this.
I move that we table this issue until our next meeting in November.
Okay, we have a motion to table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second, all in favor?
For instant discussion, is, are we, is staff to take some action in the meantime, or just to, to think about it, or? Do we have any direction? When we bring it back?
Commissioners? I can't make a motion, so you're gonna have to.
But if I remember this whole thing, I think originally, Dr. Deputy. Did you discuss this, did you discuss this with the interim city manager, Cole Leary?
Mm-hmm.
Was he the initial guy?
Well, he didn't even know, and in fact, nobody knew that, that this was a, a city street, or if it was a subdivision street. So I had to go get a title search done to be sure that it was a city street.
Okay.
And then us, because we, if it wasn't, if it was a subdivision street, we were gonna have to do something different. But at that time, the city, nobody here in the city knew that, or was really aware that a street was theirs.
And, and who did the, uh.
It's not really a street, which is probably.
Who did the, uh, guest thing, survey?
Survey, uh, errant or errant or somebody, I guess, on there. We did, we, we did both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Service. So. He's supposed to tie it all into about ten, twelve different points.
Okay.
It's taken a long time to do.
What's your name, my name, please?
Mitch Ardiva.
Simpson.
She basically, they're looking for us to sell this one. So, so, when I, when I, I, I'm kind of vague to remember the conversation with, uh, Mr. Leary. That I had with this piece of property, I've never talked to the zoning group, because I didn't realize. Because I, when I saw this whole thing, I said, oh my gosh, there's a house here, and there's something, that's probably, but anyway, um. I think initially, I'm just gonna discuss this really quick with what I think the thought process was. And I think the thought process was, we've got fifteen feet of easement here. If the city just took that from your block X, fifteen feet. That we could then, um. Move you over.
Right.
Okay, and everything would be, actually, we could move you over, yeah, fifteen feet, I guess, and everything would be in, except for this would then check. Is that, was that the initial thing?
That was closed, but yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, wait. We have a motion to table this.
We have a motion in a second, we're having discussion right now.
But the discussion is not about the motion to table, it is about the background of the property, and that can be done offline.
Okay, I understand.
It's a discussion between Mr. Deputy and Commissioner Burton.
Well, Commissioner Burton, I think, is trying to clarify, I, I, I'm, in her defense, I think she is trying to clarify for all of us commissioners.
We're gonna come right back around to where we are tonight.
We can't discuss this except for right here, together, so.
I, I've got something I need to add. I was pretty sure we gave you that property you didn't own at the time. So you can help me remember, a five-foot easement so that you could get property insurance for that house. We gave them a few feet, so their house was right on the line.
Okay.
But I don't know where that evidence is.
We've got a motion to table.
Yeah, this table.
Okay, wait a second. We've got a motion to table this, and we have a second, but I think what the. Charles is asking is, do we need to give some direction? So we need more clarification.
Well, for one thing, we should vote on the motion to table. It's a separate issue, do we give directions to Charles? Right, I understand that, so we need to vote.
So, at this point, commissioners? Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, now, we need a motion, because we need to give some direction.
All right, Charles, pardon me, Mr. Rudd. Let's see, we can't look up and find out, because this was an issue years ago. How would this little house, when it was moved from the lot where the block house is. It was moved too far over, and it encrusted on that city property there. And they could not get insurance on that house without owning, with it being on property. It seems like we gave them two, three feet, whatever.
Okay, so.
When, when would that be?
It would quite a while back.
Long time ago, nineties?
It would be somewhere, it would be somewhere in the record, right, in the, well, it would be in the property records, too. It should be in the property records, because it.
It changed. So.
So we need some direction, commissioners, okay?
I, I'm asking Mr. Rudd to, let's research this more before we come back and make a decision. Uh, I'm gonna give some motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? She did this wrong.
Pardon.
Yeah. Then we'll, we'll make sure, I mean, I thought we did, we have a motion.
Yes, I did.
Will you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Let's have it. We just need to do some, we just need to do a little bit more research. We apologize that you kind of got caught in this with changing of the guards.
Let's see if Jake can remember, because he was on.
Yeah, we was over that area.
Yes.
I remember.
Okay, let's go on to our.
They're crossing the one side, but what about the other side?
All right.
What are you gonna research on the other side?
Okay, Dr. Deputy, they're going to be in contact with you at. Oh, after the meeting, either after the meeting or sometime next week. I know that we've got something going on next week, so.
We're looking, we're looking at the history, what the commission decided back in the nineties about this property.
Mayor, this is all out of order. We have other.
Commissioner DeVito, I understand that, okay? I understand that. The, Dr. Deputy, they're gonna get with you at another day. Thank you very much. Sorry that. Okay. At this time, we're gonna have city managers' report.
Thank you, uh, as, as new part of my goals was to provide you with a written report as required in the city charter, so I've done that, pack it. Um, and I'll just go through, highlight a few items in it. I didn't wanna mention, we haven't received two applications, it's not a report. Uh, we did receive two resumes for the CRA position. And scheduled those interviews. Uh, fortunately, I've noticed, I, I got an email that I went through, so we do have one, uh, interview scheduled next week for the CRA position. Um, so I listed the goals for you, and highlighted in yellow the changes, the additions you had made to those goals. Uh, I also included, uh, a brief update on different departments. Have, um, been working on signing an agreement for our phone service to get a four-year contract with Stream. We have a little problem with the, um, the, changing the name on the contract. Our entire contract was Crescent City Police Department, so. Been going through a process, paperwork of, of changing it to the City of Crescent City. Uh, now we see our internet contract, it's in same condition, so we'll be changing there on that. In doing so, we'll get a credit, a little over six thousand dollar credit on our phone bill, so we'll basically have free phone service for approximately a year or so. Uh, building official services, I wanna bring this to your attention. We have, we have an opportunity to contract. Once again, for building official services, utilize the individual who contracts with Blacka, he's interested and, and willing to, uh, work out a similar arrangement with us. And so my request would be to, to get direction from you, back in agreement, November. Uh, so we would pull that back in house, we would have a small revenue stream then for billing. Uh, so we would pull it back in house. We would have a small revenue stream then for billing. Uh, fees, we would get basically ten percent of the fee would come to us. Right now, the county gets a hundred percent of those fees, so we create. Uh, a little revenue stream for our ability, uh, permit fees.
This is much like we had before, but we.
Yes, prior to going to the county, we, we contracted with someone to provide service. So it's been inconvenient. I feel bad. We tell people to come in for a building permit. You've gotta go to Polaca.
Yeah.
And then come back to us for a zoning approval and then go back to Polaca for the, to turn it back in and so forth. So this will be a very good convenient.
Right now, my, my understanding is Polaca, Putnam County is backed up like three to four months right now. So that would help, that would help out, especially if we start seeing more building here.
So with your, with the consensus, uh, I can bring you an agreement, uh, November.
So we need a motion to give you that direction?
So moved.
You have a motion in second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Those are the main things I wanted to highlight. I'd be happy to, um, answer any questions on, on the rest of the report. I had each department director providing sort of summary of the activities for a month.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner DeVita, do you have a question? Do you have a comment?
I have a question that relates back to Inspire Technology.
Okay.
Um, that we table that to like figure and you don't have to answer right now, but my question was, um. Been very concerned about how much we've been spending on equipment that they, I guess, have sold us. So for the next meeting, um, either you or they, uh, I would like to get a handle on how much. Software and hardware we bought. I think in the original contract, we actually agreed by like two thousand dollars worth of. Some kind of firewall related software, but there've been many more purchases. And I just want to know what was the total and were, were they in but.
We'll include all that in the, in the report.
Okay, that, that was really my one.
They did a lot of computers. They, they, we needed it.
We do do additional, uh, hardware purchases for computers. We have really old computers, something like buy or sell purchases.
But I, I think I would like to know what exactly we bought, what parts of budget it actually came out of. But that was my question about.
Mr. Pickens? Uh, I should ask, does anybody have any more questions to Mr. Red? Mr. Pickens? You got your work cut out for you.
The only thing. Yeah, you're about to ask. And as soon as I saw you tonight, I remembered that I was supposed to check. Is that what it's about?
Yeah.
So I did, I ran into Mr. Kennedy and we discussed it very briefly and then I was supposed to call him and I remember that I did not do that, so I will do that. The pod down south of town, what they're.
Okay.
Uh, just an update.
I just wanna make sure.
And I can do, just, I can do that before the next meeting.
Not really an update. My question to you was. Are they in compliance with our land use, with both our land use regulations and the actual document? This is with Ms. Ross's question. Are they supposed to be clearing, uh, based on. Our land use regulations and whatever the PD says. That was my question to you. And then if they're not in compliance, what is the city supposed to do? Because that's what Ms. Ross probably has to know. And I think, I think we all need to know that. That, that was my question on that. Uh, and I do have, I have a question for the city of Miami about biosolids.
Okay.
Um, so I've been seeing information that, uh, you know, we have the resolution opposing biosolids. Application north of, north of here. Um, apparently, the DEP is going to, to. Make a decision before the end of the year. And, uh, from what I have read. If the permit is granted, then it would be up to the citizens or whatever to do something about it. If it's denied. The applicant would have the option to contest it. They're very complicated administrative procedures with the state, right?
Yes, I, I do believe you, you would have that as a challenge.
Right, so my question is, and this is really partly for our city attorney and partly for the commission. You know, we have a resolution opposing this. If it turns out that the petition is either granted or denied, because. If it's denied and the applicant pursues it, someone would have to follow up. Should we consider hiring an attorney? And if so, should we ask other cities to join? And how would we go about finding a personal appropriate expertise?
I would say no, just because it's not within our city.
Yeah, and we're a little premature because what's gonna happen is DEP's gonna have a hearing. You're supposed to have a hearing. Everybody can come and speak. They're encouraging everyone to come speak. If they approve the application, then the application will go to the board in the Putnam County, uh. Zoning Adjustment Board. And then they will have an opportunity to weigh in on that at that time, whether or not they're going to accept the application or not. Um, and I do know right now the county commission is looking at their options too. And I think some of them have definitely vocally opposed it. I don't know that they're gonna do it, that they're gonna do it in light even. Um, but I think, and right now, the zoning adjustment board is not even scheduled until they move their meeting on this until the spring. Our February, is that, I believe.
Right, that's.
They missed their, yeah, they missed kind of that window. So we still have a little bit of time. I think that's.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that we hire an attorney now.
Yeah.
I was suggesting that we look at our options. Because they're, they're two separate procedures. The DEP.
Right. But the zoning board of adjustment is based on what. And then they, they check up, they, they have to check off boxes. The zoning board of adjustment has boxes they have to check off to make sure that that, that it meets their criteria.
Yeah, I, I think that, um. Are you talking about like hiring an attorney to do like an amicus? Standpoint or something like that, just like we send our position and we really are in the fight, but we send our position to make it known to the court. Is that where you're? Cause I just, I don't know if we have anything just because it's not.
We have standing, we have standing.
That's what you can file.
I was gonna say, my question is, do we have standing? I mean, obviously, we could, um. We could have an amicus brief or whatever they call it in administrative procedure. But potentially, would we have standing because the pollution would be occurring in our lakefront? So, uh, I don't really want a complete answer to this now. I'm just raising it both with you as our attorney and the commission.
They only have to have one note to turn it down.
Who? Right, but I'm talking about the DEP.
Right, right.
So, anyway.
And then that would be if he, I mean, I think that would come about after all of this has taken place and whether or not he appeals those, those decisions.
Right, well, I think, I think from what I read, according to the, the E P and the response out of their office. Is that any appeal to their decision is completely independent, has nothing to do with the zoning board adjustment timetable. The state statutes and administrative procedures govern that. You don't wait until after the zoning board adjustment to appeal.
Well, he won't have anything to appeal if they approve it.
No, but.
He has nothing to appeal.
Right, that would.
At that time.
That would be for residents of South Putnam.
But no, that's, it's a good point. It's something that we need to watch very closely and make sure that we're on top of it as it does come forward, right? Okay, you have any other questions for?
Probably not.
Nobody has any other questions for Mr. Pickens? Okay, commissioners. Sure time. I am gonna start off because we do still have some residents. They are doing vaccinations, I should've said at the beginning. Uh, five hundred Central Avenue tomorrow from two to six. For anybody that is still watching, listening. It has been in the paper. They're doing vaccinations and boosters of the Pfizer, if you had the Pfizer vaccine. You can get your last. Commissioner Burke, you're good? Okay, Commissioner Banks, you have anything? Commissioner DeVito, you have some, some issues?
Um, I did, I can't find them, uh. The only, I think Commissioner Burton raised an issue about the, um. Condition of Lake Stella Beach. I don't know if she's talking about the trash or the buzzards or both.
Well, I, I've talked mainly about the trash and the buzzards.
Okay, I just, let's put it this way. You circulated a picture.
Yes.
And the question of picture sometimes tells a thousand words, but I wanted to clarify, it's both the trash and the buzz.
Yes.
I don't wanna talk about it now. I just wanted to get that information. Um, that's fine, and then.
It's still an ongoing problem at the beach that we hopefully can address.
So, and I circulated some information to the city manager and then, um, the.
Yeah.
The one thing I wanted to say after this long meeting is. Um, I do think you're absolutely right. We are all new here together. And I've told Charles this before, we all have a new world, a whole relationship. Um, but I think we need to be as judicious as we can about how we set up our agendas because. You know, we need to give every issue its proper consideration. Um, and issues that pertain to one particular piece of property. Um, are one thing, but we have some issues that deal with the city as a whole and we need to give proper attention to those too. So. I think going forward, if we'll just be mindful of what we put on the agenda and also being sufficiently prepared. That we can talk about, you know, a little more expeditiously, but we're, it's a work in progress. It's a work in progress.
We have done, just in the last six, seven months, we have done a tremendous amount of hard work here at the city. And a lot of it's a lot of house cleaning and we still have a lot of house cleaning to do, so people are gonna have to just be. Everybody's gonna have to just be patient with us, but it's.
I wanna say thank you, Charles, for hanging in and taking care of all of this. This has been a lot of work since you walked in.
Yes, and I. I told Charles the other day, I said, every time I meet with you, I feel hopeful about things.
Here.
And it's very positive. And, um, so, yes, I, I second Commissioner Ross's comment. Thanks very much for everything.
Okay, then that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I surrender.
Okay, if I have a second, all in favor, say aye. Meeting just adjourned. Thank you, everyone.